Hi, everybody. Good afternoon and welcome. I'm going to call the Joint County Cities Town Meeting to order. Today is Thursday, October 30th, 2025, and it is 1:00 p.m. I'm going to ask my friend and colleague, Councilmember Fernandez, to read the land recognition for us.
We acknowledge that the Nisanan people are still here among us today, though nearly invisible. We understand that we are on Nisanan land that was never ceded, and the original tribal families have yet to recover from the near genocide of their people. As a resident or visitor in Nisanan land, we support the Nevada City Rancharia tribe in efforts to stabilize their people as well as their campaign to restore federal recognition.
Thanks, Daniela. And I'm going to ask my supervisor, Heidi Hall, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Heidi. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Klein. I'll start with the town of Truckee. Councilmember Romack?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson? Not here. Councilmember Pulavy?
Absent.
Vice Chair Clovestad?
Absent.
Chair Sabriski?
Here.
Thank you. And now for Nevada County, Supervisor Tucker. Supervisor Hook. Supervisor Bullock. Vice Chair Sorthar. And Chair Hall. Thank you. And onto Grass Valley, Councilmember Arbuckle. Vice Mayor Caravelli. And Nevada City, Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
And Mayor Klein.
Here.
Thank you and welcome.
Extremely here.
It's a little hot. We're good? Okay. Public comment. Government Code Section 54954.3 provides that any member of the public may address the city council -- all of us, city councils and supervisors, on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction. The Brown Act, with limited exceptions, does not allow the council supervisors or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. We cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. Please note that comments from the public will also be taken on each agenda item at the time of the session. So, we will -- public comment is coming at the end of this meeting. If you have specific comment, that is the place for that. Today, we are having a discussion on the subject of housing, which I know is important to us all. I am honored, on behalf of the city and my colleagues, to welcome you all here. I appreciate the folks from Truckee making the drive. Great to see all of you, and thank you for hosting last time. This is our first public meeting here at the Miners Foundry since the city took over operations here, and it's significant, I think, that our first conversation here will be about housing in our region. It's really going to quickly recognize Nevada County Supervisors, the executive team and staff, thanks for being here. The town of Truckee's electeds, executive team members and staff, thank you for being here. Grass Valley's electeds, executive team members and staff, thanks for being here. And my own colleagues and our excellent staff here, thank you so much. Do you guys do that at your meetings, too? That's just something we like to do at our meetings. That -- please respect our culture. The housing topic was selected to bring together our local agencies, housing experts, and community stakeholders to help address critical housing challenges and explore collaborative solutions. That's what we hope to do today. And it's also great to have members of HCD joining us to help us understand things from their perspective. I'm going to give a little bit of background. I grew up here, and when -- this is a very relatable story. When my dad was on his fourth wife, she booted me out of the house. We've all been there. And I -- other parts will be more relatable. And I got my first apartment right downtown Nevada City on Commercial Street. And it was my brother, my best friend and I, and it was a three-room apartment, and my room cost me $200 a month. Get me a time machine. So, I was able, living there, to save enough money to eventually get a house of my own. And more and more, a big part of why I ran in the first place was I had friends who also grew up here who were getting squeezed out, couldn't afford to live here anymore. And it was heartbreaking to see that happen to people who love this place so much. We're lucky to live in Nevada County, and it's heartbreaking to see people trying their best to stay here and not being able to because of housing shortages. My next apartment, I -- it was right on Pioneer Park, and the landlord, he was a handful. He's here tonight, Councilman Gary Peterson, ladies and gentlemen. So, the story of someone paying cheap rent and living in Nevada County, saving money for their first house seems like it's slipping away completely. And so, I hope that we keep that in mind during the discussions today. Our objectives are to educate around housing laws, impacts, and the seventh RENA cycle, identify challenges and constraints, showcase solutions and innovation, foster regional collaboration, and get feedback from our community during the public comment portion. So, our first presenter is Lisa Frank from the Senior Housing -- she's the Senior Housing Policy Specialist with HCD. She works to assist local governments and housing developers with implementation of state housing laws. Before joining HCD, Lisa was a local government planner for about seven years, processing everything from development applications, housing and otherwise, to use permits, business licenses, plan check applications, and fielding inquiries at the public counter. She's going to give her remarks, and then we'll have a little bit of time for Q and A, so let's welcome her.
All right. And if somebody could let me know how to navigate to the next slide. How's this? All right. And -- okay, do we have it loaded up here?
We're getting it up for you.
Great, thank you. In the meantime, hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having me and my colleague Taylor here, who will be joining virtually. Just on a personal level, I recently moved to Sacramento about four months ago. This is my first time in this area. I already know I'm going to plan a trip back here with my family, so -- and what a neat venue as well. So, with that, today I'm going to be talking about California's housing laws and navigating that from the perspective of HCD, and hopefully just provide kind of a starting point as a guide for you as local governments and the important work that you do in implementing those laws. And so, just something to -- just a bit of a disclaimer. HCD is a large organization. I'm here as one person on one team, which is the Housing Accountability Unit, so we'll save some time for Q and A. And I just want to say, if there are questions that I'm unable to answer, let's collect those and make sure that I can provide some follow-up on who the best person to speak with is to get you that information that you're seeking. Okay, with that, next slide. Apologies if I look back here. So, always good to sort of start again with sort of the why and the problem. As we know, the state continues to experience a significant housing need and housing shortage. In 2022, HCD published the statewide housing plan, which set the goal of facilitating the building of 2.5 million new homes through 2030, with over a million of those being affordable homes. And how that plays out, you know, ties into largely what Taylor will be talking about with the RENA and this idea that -- of fair share and rightsizing those housing production goals to the jurisdiction to collectively address the associated impacts on housing affordability for all Californians and particularly those at the lowest income levels. Next slide. So, some solutions. What we've seen in recent years, and particularly ramping up starting in 2017, are continually new housing laws coming out of the legislature and the governor. And these laws do a lot of different things, but you can see some key themes that run through them. And so, those key themes are really making it easier and faster to build housing, allowing for housing to occur in more places, so unlocking more sites for housing development opportunities, facilitating housing development at higher densities to produce more of it, and ensuring that housing that is being produced is occurring at not just the above moderate and market rate levels, but at all income levels. And then, not only are we seeing more housing laws than we have in the past, but we've also seen new mechanisms put in place to help ensure that those laws are not just on paper, that they're leading to actual outcomes and progress. And so, to do that really is where HCD's role largely comes in. And so, the legislature has granted HCD what I'll refer to as just enforcement authority to help oversee implementation and, in some cases, enforcement action to ensure that those laws are being implemented and that the intent and purpose are being fulfilled. Next slide. So, the slide is not intended to go through every single one of these housing laws. That would take -- we would need multiple hours to do that. If there are questions on specific housing laws, sort of at a high level in the Q and A, we can touch on some of those. But really, it's just to illustrate, there's a whole lot out there right now, and the ones here are those really that are under HCD's sort of enforcement purview. And so, as these laws come on the books, we're learning about them as well, along with you all, and sort of trying to understand and keep up. And then, if you -- I don't know if it's shown here clearly, but in the bottom corner you can see -- and more to come, right, starting January 1. There's new housing laws every year. Next slide. So, here again is just sort of a subset of those laws tying back to the themes that I mentioned. So, these different laws, many of them touch on one or more of those themes about facilitating more housing through -- by making processes faster and easier to navigate, and just allowing housing to occur in more places. Next slide. Okay, so, I said we're not going to go into housing laws, but since we are talking about that, I did just want to highlight one, because this is a biggie, I think, for any jurisdiction, and it may or may not have come up for you all in the course of your work so far, but just to put it on everyone's radar, one of these laws, one of these key laws is the Housing Accountability Act, or the HAA. And this law's actually been around since the 80s, but we've seen it get amended significantly over -- in recent years and strengthened in many ways. And so, this law really impacts the review of most, I would say, most housing development projects. So, not talking about things like legislative approvals, but sort of standard of review of housing projects. And it really sets a strict standard of review for how that should work. And some of the key concepts there is, one, it's providing sort of baseline legal protections for housing projects that comply with applicable objective standards. I know some of this is a little bit jargony, but it's providing added protections for certain affordable housing projects and mixed-income housing projects. It creates this idea that there are objective standards and there are non-objective standards, and it's defined in the statute, and that that's really what carries regulatory weight when a project is being evaluated, the objective standard. It also sets forth a reasonable person standard for making those evaluations about consistency with local standards. And then finally, there's statutory findings of denial. So, in those cases where a project is not going to be approved for one reason or another, it sets a standard for how to -- for what findings need to be made if a project that complies with those applicable standards is not going to be approved. Next slide. So, a little bit more about HCD and specifically the Housing Accountability Unit. Our core purpose really is to ensure that all local jurisdictions are making efforts to meet their fair share of the state's housing need and promote housing production at all income levels. And so, some strategies to go along with that are things like supporting jurisdictions through incentives and planning grants, providing education and technical assistance to help you understand and implement the law. And then, yes, in some cases, but fewer and far between really, holding jurisdictions accountable through enforcement actions as necessary. Next slide. Okay, so, these housing laws get passed, and it's always easier said than done, but navigating the gray area is really where a lot of the challenge lies, and it's where our team, the Housing Accountability Unit, plays a significant role that we want to make sure you're all aware of. So, you -- you're going to have -- there are questions that come up, right? You're looking at a statute, and you're trying to understand, well, how does this apply to this specific project, this specific site? You know, there's nuances and different kinds of circumstances that come up, and questions and conflicts from that. So, the Housing Accountability Unit has a portal, a technical assistance portal. And what that does is it allows folks to submit requests to our team, requests for technical assistance, and we get those requests from local government staff, from developers, attorneys, sometimes housing advocates or third parties. And we receive those requests and then evaluate them, and I'll talk more about that in the next slide. But something to emphasize here is we take a technical assistance-first approach. Okay, next slide. So, what happens after a request is submitted? Well, it generates a case number, it gets assigned to an analyst, and then that analyst is really digging in. Okay, so, that includes reviewing documents that are provided and all kinds of, you know, relevant background information. It also, and I want to emphasize this, includes meeting with the local government staff, whoever that might be, and as well as the developer, if we're talking about, you know, a specific project and a dispute over that. And the purpose of that is to make sure that we're talking to -- getting the perspectives of both parties, right? And so, there's a lot of that occurs in the course of evaluating these requests, and then a lot of digging into the statute. We have a team of attorneys that assists us in this work. And the end result of each request is any number of different outcomes. So, sometimes it's, we need to keep digging, there's -- this is complicated, and that happens a lot. Sometimes it's, you know, we're going to decline to weigh in for one reason or another. And then, other times, it's that we will provide technical assistance, that could be email, a phone call, or more than one. And then, the tangible thing really are these technical assistance letters that we produce. And so, on the screen, it's very small, I'm not sure if you can see it, but it's a snippet of one of those letters. And each letter, you know, addresses a specific topic and question that has been presented to our team and provides direction on the -- how to proceed. Next slide. So, here again, it's a little bit repetitive, but this is a graphic from our website that gives you an idea of how we move through sort of the progression with these requests for technical assistance. So, again, starting from that point of view and then moving, depending on how things progress, that is where it can result in enforcement action if, let's say, we've provided guidance and it's not being implemented according to our view of state law. Next slide. So, just a little bit on the results, it's not bragging, but just to kind of talk about the work that we do a little bit more and what it has resulted in. So, since around -- it's been about five years or so, what this team has been formalized, and through the work that we do, it's yielded, it's helped to unlock over 10,000 housing units. And really what that means is helping a project, you know, get through a review process to be -- to have an approved entitlement. And over 1,000 technical assistance and enforcement letters. Next slide. So, the letters I keep talking about are all publicly available. One day, hopefully soon, we'll have a kind of a better, public-facing, searchable portal. We have a massive spreadsheet at this point, which is linked, and at the end of this presentation, I'll have some links that hopefully you can all -- can be shared and follow up. But they're all out there, and we also have now this monthly digest that lists letters that have been published within the last couple of months. Next slide. And then, in addition to responding to requests that come in kind of in real time, we try to also preempt questions that may arise from the, again, the gray area and the statutes. So, we have produced a number of different technical guidance documents. What you see on the screen is just a snippet of some of those documents, so things like a very popular ADU, Accessory Dwelling Unit Handbook, Duplex Law SB9, Surplus Lands Act, some Housing Element Guidance Documents and so forth, and hopefully more coming in 2026. Next slide. Okay, so, a slide like this could take up multiple slides, but I wanted to try to boil down some general kind of guiding principles and takeaways based on what we've observed in doing this work over the last five years. So, one is, of course, details matter, and we need to be responsible in the way that we review and evaluate these housing projects, but it's important to always go back to the intent, purpose of the statute where, you know, the relevant statute, if there is one that's in play, things like, again, the Housing Accountability Act that we talked about. And so, you know, we advocate for trying to be solutions-oriented and trying to get to yes when you can. And then, another good practice is it's good, and depending on staff resources, to try to do yearly ordinance checkups. You know, these state laws get updated, ordinances may not reflect the latest. Sometimes a way to address that is just to refer, you know, have catch-all language that refers back to the statute, so it's sort of automatically acknowledging that it might be out of date. And then, things like application forms, checklists, fees for housing projects, and the review process, making sure that that's all available and clear and sort of easy to navigate as best you can. Another point here is, you know, I've talked about how HCD is here to provide guidance, but the reality is there are sometimes issues that come up that are just too sticky and gray for us to opine on. And so, sometimes it's best in those circumstances for it to be worked out in the courts, and that provides new information about how a state law should be interpreted. So, as best you can keep tabs on those appellate, especially appellate court-level decisions, it's going to help you be up on the latest with that. And then, just to underscore again, ensuring that housing projects are being evaluated at the end of the day based upon compliance with objective standards. And so, you know, those objective standards can be changed thoughtfully, but for the ones that are in place and applicable to a project, that's really what should be the task at hand. And I'm coming to the end here, so, next slide. So, just a couple concluding thoughts. You all and the work that you all do, you know, you play a critical role in achieving these housing goals, and we do want you to see HCD as a resource and a partner. So, please don't hesitate to reach out to us if you have questions. Next slide. So, this isn't going to be very useful to you sitting right here, but again, we'll make sure you get these links, but this is just kind of a compilation of some resources that we have on our website, just to make sure that you know that those exist out there. So, again, things like our letters, our guidance documents, all that good stuff. There's open data tools, you might -- some of you might be familiar with this, but you can look up, you know, annual progress report, housing production numbers for all jurisdictions throughout the state, housing element, compliance status, downloading each individual housing element, so, all kinds of good stuff. And, next slide. That takes me to the end. So, thank you very much, and my contact information is here. Unfortunately, I don't have any cards, physical cards. But, yeah, I'm available for questions. Hopefully, I left enough time for that.
We've got about 16 minutes or so for questions for Lisa, so if you want to, you can raise your hand, she'll call on you, how about that?
Sounds good.
Okay.
So, can you be a little more specific when you're talking about what technical assistance means? And then, also, in my experience, a lot of the policies that come out of HCD are very geared towards urban. Is there anything specific that you're doing that addresses housing in the rural communities? Because what I see from my lens is that we do a lot of the technical assistance stuff already to help people develop houses. What we really need is money and financing to build the projects, either through regional housing or some other program, to get that affordability or lower-income housing in our community. So, kind of, if there's anything special that you're doing technical assistance-wise for the rural communities would be helpful.
Sure, and I totally understand. The term "technical assistance" comes up in different ways throughout the work that our department does. So, the teams that are working on grants, you know, reviewing grant applications and funding opportunities, have folks that are providing technical assistance for the purposes of seeking that funding. So, unfortunately, that's not the team that I'm on, but like I mentioned at the beginning, I'm happy to collect if there are specific questions sort of on the grants funding side, I can put you in touch with those folks. But just to go back to your initial question, when I say "technical assistance," and you mentioned rural jurisdictions, so, I guess a couple things in no particular order. Some of the state housing laws that I had on the screen there, some of them apply statewide, no matter the size or type of jurisdiction we're talking about. Some of them don't, or apply in different ways. But, so, what those are about, and it may not be, it may have less relevance here if you're not being faced with as many housing development applications as you would be hoping for, or if that's not coming up very often. But where, where, let's say, a developer is trying to use one of those laws where it does apply, even in a rural jurisdiction, we might get, HCD might get a question about, just as an example, let's say, maybe they're looking at the, working with the city or county and/or town, and there's questions about, well, you know, what, there seems to be an inconsistency with the zoning and the general plan here, and we don't know what that means for what this law says. And so, the question comes to us, and we can hopefully help untangle it from our perspective and then help clarify for the local government, for the developer, what, how we think it would apply in that specific situation. So, it's very, very practical in that way. It's really meant to evaluate project-specific issues. There are other, yeah, so, if it's not specific development projects that we're talking about, some of them may not apply. There's things like the Housing Crisis Act that addresses this idea of development capacity, ensuring that the local government isn't taking actions to reduce, you know, whether intentionally or not, development capacity. So, there's, I don't know that I'm fully answering your question, but yes, I mean, we provide technical assistance to jurisdictions of all types, including very, the smaller and more rural jurisdictions out there. But for the funding, yeah, I would want to make sure I connect you with somebody that can better answer that.
Can you hear me? There we go.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I'm wondering if you're asked to provide that kind of technical assistance the other directions? And I'm thinking specifically of the legislature that's passing these bills, and then you're in the position to have to interpret them, right? Do they ask you to give them feedback on what isn't making sense to the locals? And can you interject yourself there? That is part of the issue we have here, too, where we have, you know, regulations or requirements that don't make sense or that are actually conflicting. And one of the biggest issues is, of course, that we're asked to be building more housing by one part of the state. The other part of the state is saying, "Stop building in the wooi and the wildland-urban interface, which we all are in." So, you could just address the first part of that.
Yeah, I mean, so, HCD is not in a role of influencing the legislature. We leave it up to the locals and other outside parties to do that. Really, what we're focused on with new legislation is how it impact, how it impacts our department in terms of implementation and the resources that we would need available to implement that law. So, we're not, we're not really in a position to try to, you know, influence the nature of those laws. But where there are common themes that come up, I know, I think, we do have a Legislative Affairs Division that is a liaison with legislative staff, so, you know, I'm sure there are conversations along those lines that do happen, but the folks on my team were pretty, you know, separated from that and really focused on the implementation. on the implementation. Yeah. Any other questions? Yep. Sure. Well, first of all, I'm sorry if you're not able to hear me. I wasn't aware of that, but as far as the presentation, I think folks from the event would be able to share that. I'm not sure, but hopefully that is the case. Is that, yeah, so the presentation will be shared. And as far as your other question, whether this is being implemented throughout the state, so it's really, it depends upon where the state laws, as I mentioned, apply, these exist today, they're on the books and apply throughout the state in different ways, not all of them. But if we take for an example accessory dwelling units, that's a state law that applies to many single-family properties throughout the entire state. So yes, all of this is currently in place. And really, again, what we're trying to do is help folks understand the rules so that it can be, that, yeah, it can be implemented. Are other folks having issues?
Thank you, Dean, for that clarification.
I have a question over here. Later this afternoon, we're going to hear about innovative solutions for housing. Does HCD play any role in trying to come up with lower-cost construction of other forms of housing besides just your normal multifamily housing and mobile home?
Um, you know, largely HCD is, especially the team I'm on, is sort of responding to the great work that people out there are doing, like thinking of new ways to manufacture and create housing at lower costs. So we're not necessarily the, the, what's the word? We're not necessarily coming up with the new ideas, though we're always interested in hearing what they are and working, you know, with local governments to figure out how those can be facilitated. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know if that fully answers your question, but there are, you know, I think folks that are working on the grants and funding side, who are partnering with developers probably are, you know, could share some, some success stories along those lines with manufactured housing and the like. And so there, yeah, I think there's examples out there, but I wouldn't say necessarily that HCD is creating the ideas. Yeah. Any other questions?
Thanks so much, Lisa.
Thank you.
I just want to say for folks who are having a hard time hearing this in the room, and God, hopefully you can hear this, this is all being recorded. You can watch it on YouTube after the, after the event to check up on what you missed. Thanks again, Lisa. Up next, we have Taylor Price from HCD, a housing and community development specialist there. He serves as the RENA team project manager. Taylor previously worked at the County of Monterey, housing and community development as a planner. I believe he's going to be joining us on the screen.
Hello.
Hi, Taylor.
Can you all hear me okay? I cannot hear, unfortunately.
Can you hear this? We can hear you.
Taylor, can you hear me, Taylor? Taylor? I think he cannot.
Okay, son. Awesome. And I will.
...for production. And finally, it's also not limited due to the existing land use capacity. Identifying the addressing the statewide housing need is a multi-layered process that occurs over many years. For the Nevada County region, the determination and allocation occur at the same time, and this occurs at least one year before the housing element due date. In the determination phase, HCD, in consultation with the Department of Finance's demographic research unit and Nevada County, develops the regional housing need determination for the region using a variety of data factors. Next is the allocation, or how HCD for rural regions distributes a portion of the determination to each jurisdiction. Once jurisdictions get their allocation, they use those numbers to update their housing element to demonstrate the housing need can be accommodated. Housing elements must identify and zone adequate housing sites to accommodate their share of RENA over the duration of the housing element planning period and must include programs to encourage and facilitate housing development and remove or mitigate development constraints. Then each year jurisdictions report annually on their housing element progress through their annual progress report. In calculating the determination, HCD and the county meet and consult regarding the following data factors. Data sources for these factors generally come from the demographic research unit at the California Department of Finance, the county, the United States Census Bureau and American Community Survey, the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services, the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and Caltrans. Once data on those affirmation factors are gathered, the regional housing need can be calculated. To illustrate this calculation, in partnership with the Department of Finance, HCD starts with the population projected to live in the region at the end of the cycle and subtract those living in group quarters. Then HCD converts the projected household population to projected households using household formation rate data for the region. HCD then applies adjustments to include factors relating to those on the slide. The manner in which the adjustments are calculated varies somewhat based on factor, but typically we compare data for the region against the national average and apply an adjustment based on how it compares to the national average. We then subtract the number of occupied units at the start of the projection period, and that gives us the total housing need determination. We then distribute the total number across income categories. What was four categories in the sixth cycle is now six categories in the seventh cycle, and those are acutely low income, extremely low income, very low income, low income, moderate income, and above moderate income, as defined by a percentage of a region's median income. There have been a number of new updates to the RENA methodology since Nevada's sixth cycle regional housing need determination was issued. When the sixth cycle RENA determination was issued, there were three adjustments: the vacancy adjustment, overcrowding adjustment, and replacement adjustment. Nevada is oftentimes early in the RENA cycle, and in the sixth cycle, there were significant changes to state law and the determination methodology that went into effect after Nevada's sixth cycle determination was issued. These include the addition of the cost-burn adjustment and the state of emergency adjustment. Since the conclusion of the sixth cycle, there have been additional updates to the determination methodology that have been added by statute or through HCD's existing administrative authority. These include updates to reflect demographic and data best practices as informed by extensive expert and stakeholder engagement to more accurately reflect the true housing need. The updated RENA methodology includes adjustments to account for the long-term permanent housing needs of people experiencing homelessness, to achieve a jobs-housing balance, to reflect differences in healthy vacancy rate by tenure, and others. Due to the timing of the Nevada region's RENA early in the cycle, the region missed out on some of the most significant sixth cycle adjustments. So the region is effectively experiencing one and a half reasons of the RENA cycle worth of updates at once. However, these changes are essential to make sure that each region of the state is essentially planning for the best estimate of true housing need. This is the Nevada's seventh cycle regional housing need determination, broken down by the six income categories. This is what the Nevada region's determination looks like. This was included in the letter and workbook that HCD sent to the region. There is too much information here to cover today, but I wanted to focus on some of the newer adjustments. In subsequent slides, we will be reviewing in more detail the adjustments which accounted for the majority of the seventh cycle RENA, which are adjustment five, the owner or renter vacancy adjustments, adjustment seven, the cost-burn adjustment, adjustment 10, the replacement adjustment to account for seasonal, recreational, and occasional use homes, and adjustment 12, the homelessness adjustment. The vacancy adjustment is intended to ensure that the region's vacancy rate more closely resembles the vacancy rate of a healthy housing market. The vacancy rate for a healthy housing market was chosen after extensive research and stakeholder outreach as a part of the California Housing Future 2040 Report. Additionally, based on stakeholder feedback, the seventh cycle adjustment was split out by owner and renter. It was determined that a healthy owner vacancy rate is 2% and a healthy renter vacancy rate in the more rural areas of the state is 6%. For the Nevada region, this resulted in a total vacancy adjustment of 352 units, where that is broken down into 319 units for existing households and 33 for projected households. The existing owner and renter vacancy adjustment is calculated by taking the difference between the healthy vacancy rate of 2% for owners and 6% for renters and the region's vacancy rate, and then applying that difference to existing homes. For the Nevada region, this meant taking the difference between the healthy owner vacancy rate of 2% and subtracting the county's existing owner vacancy rate of 1.75%, then taking that 0.25% difference and multiplying it by the existing occupied households in the county. The existing renter vacancy adjustment was calculated in a similar manner by taking the healthy renter vacancy rate of 6% and subtracting the county's existing renter vacancy rate of 3.88%, then taking that 2.12% difference and multiplying it by the existing occupied renter households in the county. The projected owner and renter vacancy adjustment is calculated by taking the healthy vacancy rate of 2% and 6% for renters and applying those rates to the projected homes for the region. For the Nevada region, this meant that the 2% healthy owner vacancy rate and then multiplying it by the projected new owner households. The same process was followed for the renter vacancy rate, where HCD takes the 6% healthy renter vacancy rate and multiplies it by the projected new renter households. Cost-burn households reflect the extent to which households, particularly lower-income households, are impacted by a tight housing market. High rates of cost-burn households suggest there is an insufficient supply of affordable housing units and the region has a significant amount of pent of demand for housing units, leading to households spending a greater share of their income, 30% or more to be exact, on housing costs. The cost-burn adjustment compares the regional cost-burn rate to the national average and then applies that difference to existing households. For the Nevada region, that meant taking Nevada County's cost-burn rate of 42.13% and subtracting that from the national rate of 31.68%, then applying this difference of 10.45% to the region's existing households to obtain the total adjustment of 4,562 The seasonal, recreational, and occasional use adjustment is intended to ensure that new housing units that are not available to permanent, long-term residents are accounted for in a region's housing needs using the United States Census Bureau data. For the seventh cycle, HCD has updated its replacement rate adjustment to include those homes lost to seasonal, recreational, and occasional use in addition to those lost to demolition. The adjustment takes the change in seasonal, recreational, and occasional use homes and divides it by the total change in home production over the prior planning period. This percentage, which for the Nevada region was one of the highest in the state, at 35.45%, is then applied to the preliminary regional housing need to determine the seasonal, recreational, and occasional use adjustment. While in most regions of the state, we see percentages in the single digits, at 35.45%, Nevada County had one of the highest in the state, indicating that a large share of housing units in the region have become things like short-term rentals or vacation homes over the last planning period. Because this rate in Nevada County seemed to be an outlier compared to other regions in the state, HCD decided to cap the adjustment at 10%, which resulted in a 641-unit adjustment for the Nevada region. This is instead of, if using the 35.45% unit adjustment, that would have resulted in a 2,274-unit adjustment. Lastly, the homelessness adjustment, which was added last year as a part of Assembly Bill 3093. The homelessness adjustment is intended to ensure that the housing needs of individuals, families experiencing homelessness, are adequately addressed in the regional housing need determination process. To ensure that these individuals and families are accounted for, HCD obtains the point-in-time count from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. HCD then takes that pit count data by the age category and multiplies it by the Department of Finance household formation rates by age category to obtain the number of housing units that would be needed to ensure that all homeless individuals and families were So what are the next steps? Here's just a brief and simplified summary. So Nevada County Regional Transportation Plan is estimated to be adopted in November of 2025. HCD expects to issue the final allocation plan letter after the completion of the local review period, which should occur sometime in January 2026. And then housing elements for Nevada region jurisdictions are due May 15 of 2027. Thank you. That's the end of the presentation, and I will now pause to take any questions.
Thanks for that, Taylor. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
That's fantastic. Let's see if you can, you can hear my friend Daniella.
Hi, Taylor, are you able to hear me?
I am, yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Awesome. So Taylor, we'll take questions now. If anyone has one, you can raise your hand and chime in.
If the slides will be available.
If the slides will be available for us, I think the information that they show, that HCD shows is be valuable for us to take back to our staff.
Yeah, of course. I can absolutely share those.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand your data sources and then how you distribute what you call the Nevada region data. I understand you're talking about Nevada County. Do you take data directly for any of the municipalities? Or are you have a formula where you allocate your findings based on some criteria to the municipalities?
Yeah, so the determination number for the Nevada region is then allocated by HCD using the allocation methodology that HCD uses for rural regions. So that effectively needs to take into account the statutory requirements of Rena, which there's jobs housing, there is affirmatively furthering fair housing among a couple other allocations. So that formula is then applied to the Nevada region, and then that is how each jurisdiction in the Nevada region obtains the final regional housing need determination for each jurisdiction.
Okay, for example, in determining cost burden, do you look at, for example, the town of Truckee and do a determination of the cost burden based on Truckee specific costs? Or are you doing an allocation based on a wider geographical area?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So the determination phase takes into account the cost burden for the entire region, and that's how we get that big number. For the allocation phase, that is a part of the methodology, not a significant part, but it's one of the components of the methodology.
So I'm clear. So you use the cost burden for the entire Nevada County and apply that to all the municipalities?
For the determination, for that big number for the region. That's how we get the cost burden adjustment.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was curious if you could explain the vacancy rate and how that's determined? Because I feel like oftentimes in Truckee, we think of vacancy rate more tied to our seasonal second homeowners. But that was a different metric in that. So just curious, that two percent and six percent you spoke to, what are those a reflection of?
Yeah, so the two percent and six percent number for the healthy vacancy rate adjustment, those are really to account for homes that are vacant and not due to the seasonal recreational or occasional use, since that's a separate adjustment. The, those two percent and six percent numbers were determined, I think, as I mentioned, by extensive stakeholder outreach that was done through the California Housing Future 2040 report. And just to kind of determine what is an appropriate vacancy number to help ensure that home prices and rental prices are not increasing. And those are the numbers that the academic research has kind of determined are roughly in line with not increasing home prices.
Just another question then on the seasonal usage, because I think, you know, I know in Truckee, we talk about about fifty percent of our housing stock is second homeowners. So it does seem like Nevada County is adversely impacted by having a fair bit of second homeowners with those additional numbers at the end. Where that is a big part of our economy is tourism, so maybe it's more of a statement than a question, but again, it seems we're a little bit being punished for that, but yet we would, we need second homeowners for our economy to survive. So I don't know if you have any response to that.
Yeah, no, it's definitely a hard thing to balance. And we received extensive stakeholder input through, I think I mentioned the C A Housing Future Report, where we were kind of looking to update Rena for the seventh cycle. That was something that a lot of stakeholders and academics really mentioned was an important thing to include as those homes are not available for long-term residents, but it is a balancing act, of course, as you mentioned, where the, you know, homes are an important part of the local economy as well. So I think that was one of the reasons that we did include for the Nevada region that ten percent cap, just to really ensure that regions that have significant second homes and that seasonal, recreational, and occasional use are not being adversely impacted by those higher rates. So trying to ensure that it's a reasonable adjustment for the region.
Hey, Adam. Green light means go. Okay. Yeah, thank you. Following up on that, you indicated in your presentation that Nevada County and the area was an anomaly to the rest of the state in terms of the vacancies. So I wonder if you could unpack that a little bit and and talk about what that means in relation to the rest of it?
Yeah, of course. So for the seasonal, recreational, and occasional use home adjustment, most of the state, when we were kind of doing initial testing, had rates in the low single digits. There were a couple of jurisdictions that had very elevated rates. One of the ones I can think of right off the bat was Mendocino County was another jurisdiction. Their rate was two hundred and twelve percent. So what we tried to do when we were looking at that is be aware of regions that did have high increases in their seasonal, recreational, or occasional use homes over the prior planning period. But also ensure that, you know, outliers like two hundred and twelve percent that we didn't feel was reasonable to apply to a region's regional housing need determination, since that would result in multiple thousands or tens of thousands of additional units that would be a part of the determination.
How did our, maybe I wasn't listening, but I was wondering how our number came in relation to the outlier of Mendocino?
Yeah, so the, and apologies if you can hear me. I'll try to speak up. The Mendocino rate that we found was two hundred and twelve percent for that adjustment before we capped it at the ten percent. So there's would have been even more significant than the Nevada region if it had not been capped.
Nevada region number is?
The Nevada region percentage was thirty-five point four percent, four or five percent before HCD capped it at ten percent.
Thank you.
So a quick question. Thanks, Taylor, for your presentation. One question, or kind of two-part. When, what feedback mechanism do different jurisdictions have in answering some of the questions while you're developing the data in that interim period before the publication? Question one. Question two is, are you taking into account unrealized units that are blocked by things like fire insurance? For example, we've had big developments with the inability to actually insure the developments. So the developer community, the county, and all the jurisdictions are pulling together along with the state to get that completed, but it's not possible in California and some, you know, rural communities. Is there a metric being placed in the, in the queue to understand the impact of things like fire insurance?
Yeah, so I'll try to answer the first part and then the second part subsequently. So as a part of the regional housing needs allocation process, HCD consults with each county or council of regional governments for areas with larger areas of the state, so like the Bay Area or Southern California. And we do inquire about potential data that those regions or councils have to supplement the existing data that HCD has. So that is built into the process. I know a lot of times it's challenging for more rural areas to kind of have the data collection abilities and because the U.S. Census is such a, you know, good standard of data, that tends to be the default information that we'll use unless presented with other information. And then for the second part of your question, I think I won't necessarily dive too deeply into it as I'm not on the housing element team, but I think one of the things that's really important is during the housing element process, site selection and really ensuring that site selection is, you know, choosing areas that are appropriate for housing and can foster housing in a way that, you know, ensures they're as removed as possible from natural hazards such as flooding and fire. I know for some regions that isn't as feasible, but I think that's one of the important processes that can allot for that.
Yeah, I totally understand what you're describing, but I think for flood and fire, at least for our county, we're kind of affected by the woolly in almost every area. I don't have a percentage off the top of my head, but it's huge. And so I would propose that you're, you look closely at adding an unrealized number in there for making adjustments for areas that essentially can't be insured.
Yeah, and that's definitely something that, you know, you can feel free to email to me, and I can definitely forward that to the housing element team.
I'm just curious, you know, the sites inventory guidelines HCD publishes, those are really where the tire meets the road in determining, you know, Rena compliance. Are there, given the changes that legislature made with all of the Rena methodology, are you planning to make some changes to the sites inventory guidelines?
Yeah, and not to speak for the housing element team, but I do believe that they are planning on publishing an updated seven cycle sites inventory selection memo.
So I'll make it a little easier to meet Rena.
Yeah, I believe, I believe that's the intention.
Is the legislature or any commissions right now reviewing the Rena process to improve it?
Yes, I think, as I mentioned kind of in the presentation, there was, at the end of the sixth cycle, there was a fairly significant, both an audit of the prior Rena process in the sixth cycle, as well as the C A Housing Future Report, which really delved deep into the methodology of Rena and really tried to ensure that the methodology and processes in place were further tightened and made very, you know, appropriate for the seventh cycle, which resulted in a lot of the adjustments that are being rolled out for the seventh cycle. So I think, yeah, there is a strong involvement and, you know, HCD internally is always trying to improve its processes. And there will be some TA materials that will be produced as a part of the seventh cycle. We're hoping on rolling those out in January or February of next year.
Yeah.
Hi, Doug Fleming, Nevada County, Nevada City. So when you're allocating the Rena numbers within the Nevada region, how are you doing that? Is that based on population? Is it based on other demographics? Is it based on geographical footprint? What are you looking at?
Yeah, so the allocation methodology has to further the five statutory objectives of Rena. And so really what that entails is looking at jobs, housing, population, ensuring that the allocation methodology is affirmatively furthering fair housing so that we are adjusting to ensure that, you know, lower income jurisdictions are not receiving a disproportionate share of units. There are, I think I mentioned jobs, housing, affirmatively furthering fair housing. And then there is also adjustments to how their units are distributed via income categories. And that is also just to ensure that there is the affirmatively furthering fair housing and climate as well, to ensure that there's a better areas that have more jobs are allocated more housing units.
So when you look at Nevada City, you know, we have a very finite amount of land here. And we're being asked to, you know, add an additional four hundred and thirty-four units. We just don't have the space to put those units. What do you do in a situation like that?
Yeah, so I think one of the things that we try to do through the allocation process is really ensure that we're following the requirements that the legislature put into effect with the statute. So I definitely understand that there, you know, are some challenges to having those particular sites built in certain areas with locational constraints. But we are also, you know, hoping and expecting that there will be likely rezoning and upzoning to allow jurisdictions to meet those requirements.
Yeah, but we just don't have the land, actually. You know, it's not a matter of zoning issues. It's just a matter of, you know, geography. So my last question is, how do we challenge our Rena numbers?
Yeah, so the process to challenge the overall determination, once HCD issues a determination, there is not the ability for the region or jurisdictions to challenge the determination, so that total number. If a local jurisdiction, the region, does feel that their allocation should be reduced, there is a mechanism to challenge that. And I think I mentioned the, in the presentation, the January twenty twenty-six date. So that's when HCD will issue the final allocation plan. So if your jurisdiction does want to challenge its Rena allocation, it's more than welcome to do that. The process, I believe, is outlined in the letter, and you can also feel free to reach out to me directly. And I can provide you some with the statute as well as some of the guidelines for that process.
Okay, thank you. But so what you're saying, though, really last question, is if we reallocate from Nevada City, it just gets dumped on Grass Valley or the county?
Yes, so that is the, the final number for the region is final.
You didn't even mention Truckee.
Sorry, and Truckee, they got a lot of land. So, you know, so, but it's not, we're not going to challenge the determination of the overhaul number for the Nevada region, right?
Yeah, that, that number is final. There can be challenges to how the allocation was done. So if Nevada City or Truckee or Grass Valley wanted to challenge their allocation of the final number, that's something that can be done. But that number would need to be reallocated and reviewed by HCD to ensure that that's shifted to another jurisdiction in the region.
Thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. This question might actually be better for Lisa who spoke previously, but I think if you, you can assume that we're all trying to do our best to build housing in our various jurisdictions. But as it looks, it looks pretty, like it's going to be pretty hard for all of us to meet those numbers. So let's say we don't, even though we've tried, what is the actual enforcement action that's taken?
Yeah, so I think I won't really be able to speak to kind of the enforcement piece since that's more of the H A U team. But I will just say that, you know, the housing element in the Rena process is really intended to plan for the housing. We are not, it's not a requirement to build the housing. We just need to see that the allocation is being planned for in a way that is appropriate and follows the statutory and administrative requirements of housing element law.
There are the enforcement actions that happen, you know. You have a lot of jurisdictions around the state that haven't met their Rena numbers, you know. It's, it's pretty poor. You know, what can, you know, what happens? And then, you know, what if we just physically can't meet our Rena numbers? What's the penalty to us?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, I probably won't be able to best speak to that since I'm not on the housing accountability team. But just kind of broadly speaking and generally, the Rena process is really intended for that planning piece. So the jurisdictions need to ensure that they're, they can show through the housing element that they're able to plan for those units, not necessarily have them constructed. And that's kind of the most, the most important piece in the Rena process. the most important piece in the RENA process that I'm in, in the housing element process.
Thanks.
Can you clarify how manufactured and mobile homes are counted, and specifically those that are within the jurisdiction of HCD in Mobile Home Parks?
Yeah, so I'll speak broadly to this question, but the annual progress report that jurisdictions submit, any unit that is counted must meet the definition of a housing unit. And I believe that, to my knowledge, mobile homes and manufactured homes are included in the definition of a housing unit, because housing unit is tied to the United States Census Bureau definition of a housing unit.
And so rental versus ownership, I guess, that is an open question?
Yeah, maybe let me just clarify the question for when you say renter versus owner. If a housing unit is newly constructed, the renter versus owner dichotomy isn't, won't impact how it is counted in the annual progress report, because it's really just a housing unit.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Taylor? Thanks so much, Taylor.
Thank you all.
A 10-minute break, and we'll pick this up in 10 minutes, like a 10-minute break. 10 minutes exactly. It is my privilege to introduce Tyler Barrington of Nevada County. He is the Director of Housing and Community Services, and he's going to introduce the rest of this panel.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Klein. So I'm Tyler Barrington. I am the County Director of Housing and Community Services. Prior to taking this position, I worked with the County Planning Department for approximately 20 years. I was responsible for updating the county's fourth and fifth housing element, cycle housing element. And then prior to that, I worked on four small Northern California jurisdictions' housing element in the third cycle. So have quite a bit of background in housing elements and kind of what it takes to get those certified. But I have a panel here of distinguished professional planners, and I'll let them go ahead and introduce themselves and give a little brief background on themselves.
Good afternoon. My name's Brian Foss. I'm the Planning Director with Nevada County. I've been with the county since 2005. I was started as Principal Planner and have been Director for a little over half the time that I've been here. I too was part of the last two previous housing element cycles, the fourth and fifth, or fifth and sixth cycles. And so now we're ready to embark on the seventh, and should be an interesting conversation. Glad to be here. Thank you.
My name's Amy Wilson. I'm with the city of, sorry, the city of Grass Valley. Can you hear me? The city planner there. And I, I've been there for about two and a half years. Prior to that, I was the city planner at Nevada City and did manage the sixth-cycle housing element there. But this will be my first time with the city of Grass Valley updating that that housing element.
Hello, my name is Yumi Dawn. I'm a Principal Planner with the town of Truckee. I've been there about 13 years, from we intern to Principal Planner now. I've worked similar to my cohorts here on the fifth and sixth-cycle housing elements for the town, and then now didn't think it'd happen, but here I am doing the seventh cycle.
Gary Price. I've worked as a contract planner for a number of agencies. Previously did the last two housing elements for Nevada City with Amy. And, yeah, I've probably done 30 housing elements so far. I'm not sure I want to do the seventh one, though. But, yeah, Nevada City hired me as a, there with Jessica Hankins to just kind of interim planning for, you know, until we get permanent staffing. But I'm happy to be here. I used to work for the city of Grass Valley 15 years, city of San Luis Obispo, a lot of different agencies, and anyway, glad to be here.
Thank you all. So I mentioned working as a consultant for, on the third housing element cycle. When I got done with that, I'm like, I hope I never touch another housing element. But I wasn't that lucky. So HCD set up our regional housing need allocation, and the numbers on the board kind of reflect progress of where we are to date, based on the 2024, actually, it was the 2025 Housing Element Annual Report for each of the jurisdictions. As you can see, you know, it is a struggle to get those units built. While we're not obligated to actually build the units, we ought to make the sites available with adequate zoning and the right infrastructure, but it doesn't mean that those sites actually get built. And I will note, and Truckee's have a little asterisk, is they're 150% above their regional housing need allocation, but that's due to a number of units in the moderate category, above moderate category. They have a few left in low, very low and low and moderate. And then this kind of is a good segue into the next slide, which shows what our increase is with the seventh element, or the seventh cycle. As you can see, there's a significant increase for all of our jurisdictions that we're going to have to address as we get it moved forward with our housing element. So with that, we have a series of questions for the panel to talk about how they plan to attack this latest housing element cycle. And so with the first question, I will start with Brian. And Brian, and what progress has your jurisdiction made since the last housing element cycle, particularly the producing new units in the low and very low-income households? Which programs have been effective and which ones have fallen short of those targets?
Great, thank you, Tyler. So for the very low and low-income categories, our six-cycle numbers required 475 units of very low to be accommodated for through appropriate zoning, and 367 units in the low category. As of the end of 2024, so this doesn't include 2025 numbers, this would include 2019 through '24 numbers. We've issued permits for 94 out of the 475 in very low, so that's just under 20%. And in the low category, we've issued 180 permits out of the 367 planned for, which is almost 50%. So we still have two, or actually two more reporting years on that, but it's unlikely that, given the past trends, that will reach 100% of the allocated housing units that were assigned to the county. As far as the moderate and the above moderate, we're about 50% of achieving the moderate income and about 27% of the above moderate. So all categories across the board were not likely to achieve 100%. As far as the successful programs and issues that are built into our housing element, there's other things in there besides just RENA numbers. And some of the more successful programs, I think, have been keeping up with the myriad of requirements from the state on ADUs and JADUs. The county's worked hard over the last couple of years to update our ordinance to be compliant with state requirements, as well as to promote ADUs as a potential option for a more affordable housing type. The county also achieved a pro-housing designation this last year, which shows a broad range of reducing barriers, including different code requirements, making different affordable housing programs available to the members, and streamlined and reduce processing times. We do have ADU master plans that are pre-approved that were created through a local early-action planning grant through HCD. And I think the county has done, worked with each of the other incorporated jurisdictions on some housing projects, providing some funding support and helping those jurisdictions develop some good housing projects within the city and town limits. In terms of where we've fallen a little bit short is, we haven't seen a lot of use out of those pre-approved plans. We have two, I believe, two approved plans over the last couple of years. We've also implemented Title 26, which, or Title 25, I'm sorry, which reduces some of the building code requirements, and we've had six of those types of units permitted over the last year. And we also developed a tiny homes-on-wheels ordinance, and so far, we've had four of those permitted. And lastly, the developing the pre-zone sites, we're in a similar situation with our sixth cycle, where it was required to rezone some property to meet our RENA allocation numbers. And while some of those sites, such as Lone Oak down in Penn Valley, have developed, we still have a number of sites that are zoned for R3 high-density development. They're a by-right use, don't require use permit, but they still remain vacant. And some of the challenges in developing those sites and talking to the developer are high fire insurance costs have been a huge challenge for the county. Pass it on.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, excuse me. Yeah, I think Grass Valley is experiencing, obviously, a lot of the same issues. We, we're falling short of, I think, across all of our RENA numbers, the actually building the units. We did build, or we did, we did build over 200 units, and that's, again, not, not including the last several months, but the, but over the course of our, our sixth housing cycle, we've, we'll, we'll be over 200 units, and we've got entitlements for enough to get us over to our, to our, could potentially get us to our full capacity, but unlikely that we're going to make that. The low and very low incomes categories are, they're, I think, across California are, are just difficult to do. They generally require heavy subsidization by, you know, federal and state agencies. But one place where I think Grass Valley is doing really well is partnering with groups like Habitat for Humanity. You know, there, we've, we've got currently about 30 units that could potentially become available at various stages of entitlement. But those are, they're, they're sort of a bright spot, I feel like, in low-income housing development, and we're lucky to have a good relationship with them. That, and I think the Regional Housing Trust Fund has been helpful across the entire county, not just Nevada City, but those are, those are programs that are actually facilitating affordable housing, and it's, that's just the category that's really difficult for, for all of us, I think.
For the town of Truckee, similar, it sounds like, to all the other jurisdictions, we've successfully, we have enough zoning to meet our RENA requirements. As we all know, we're not here to actually build the required, the required units that are required by RENA. We're just, as part of our housing element, required to provide the zoning. But per other state regulations, we're required to provide, required to measure how much housing is actually being built by developers. So since the adoption of our sixth-cycle housing element, we have, our developers have constructed about 65% of our very low and then 80% of our low. And primarily, that's come from three larger affordable housing projects that come from tax credit financing provided by the state and not necessarily driven solely by a town policy or our housing element. Though we do support housing and much of the requirement, the housing that was created through this is, was in part because of our inclusionary housing requirements, which have, obviously, that is a program that has been successful in this regard. We have found that funding is the major way that we can support housing projects within our community. Similar to Nevada County, the ADU programs that we have, we have a dedicated ADU planner who works directly with the public to create more AD, help them create ADUs on their property. So that's been successful since the 2019, or since 2018, we've created 30, 33, sorry, 109 ADUs and JADUs, which is a large increase since before 2018, before we started tracking. A lot of those may be from after-the-fact permits that were already created, but we are bringing them now into compliance, meeting current building codes, making safer housing solutions for our community. Some things that may not be as successful is state requirements for by-right housing. We've implemented that on a couple parcels in our community. We haven't received much feedback on whether or not developers want to proceed with using those, those allowances. Density bonus programs, we have approved a few of density bonus programs within our community. However, only one has been built, and that's primarily because of a partnership with the community, with the town, on town-owned property, which has been one of our other successes, where we have worked directly with developers, partnering, assisting them with infrastructure through our affordable housing funds. That's where.
It's a really hard act to follow. I mean, biggest town in Nevada County, and they have their own ADU planner. Well, Nevada City has limited resources, as you all know, town of about less than 3,000, but we have accomplished a lot. We're small but mighty, is kind of the way I look at it. I mean, if you can look at production, 63% of the sixth cycle. I think what's been really interesting in my experience is when we did the fifth cycle, we did it with Tom Perillo, many of you know, and we identified some sites that we thought would be ideal candidates, and one is completely built, it's the Cashin's Field project. We're really, I think everybody's happy with that. That involved collaboration with partner agencies like the county, and we were so fortunate. We have to rely on the bigger resources to be successful. But I think, you know, we've done, we've been really successful for our limited RENA. And so the other thing we're attempting to do is similar, pre-approved ADU plans, we're working on that. So we've had several ADUs created, but that's more of a market-driven, but we really have a program to encourage them. And so that's been a big boost in the low-income area. So things are working, whether it's because of the housing element and state mandates, or whether it's just our community really wanting to see more workforce housing, which I think we really need. Right? That's it.
Thank you. And just for the group, oh, wow, okay. I won't make a comment, I'll go to the next question. All right, so the next question is, and maybe this time we'll start with Yumi. What are your biggest challenges your jurisdiction faces in meeting the RENA goals and adopting a compliant housing element?
Time. I think time is the biggest factor right now. We've hired a consultant to work on our housing element. It sounds like, although we have till 2027, they're trying to give us, they're giving us a timeline of nine months to try to create a pretty complete housing element, do our community outreach, identify sites if necessary. So it's a pretty, that, I think, is one of the biggest challenges in terms of meeting the housing element deadlines. And then if we do need to do potential rezones for the site, for the town, which we haven't determined yet, we'd have to, I think that could be a challenge for our community, just because we recently adopted a general plan in 2023, where we talked to our community about what they want to see in terms of housing and density. And if we do need to increase density in certain locations, that may, that may be disregarding what our community has previously discussed. And then as we move forward, in terms of actual construction of housing units, I think we're all, we're all facing the similar issues in terms of fire insurance we've heard about today, requirements for secondary egress in terms of the fire code, and then the cost of construction, which is pretty high in Truckee, where state laws aren't necessarily focusing only on affordable housing. They're not incentivizing it enough for development, for construction in Truckee to be geared only towards affordable housing, since we do have a large luxury home market. A lot of developers would rather construct luxury, luxury homes in affordable units.
Thanks, Yumi. How about Amy, would you like to reply?
I'll try to add, we have a lot of the same, same issues, maybe less of the luxury housing market, but I think one of our issues is that we don't have a lot of usable land left for developers. You know, what's remaining tends to be either geographically
You know, what's remaining tends to be either geographically or environmentally constrained. We have a lot of legacy mining that, you know, is really expensive to clean up, hard to get funded. And then, you know, we have concerns over infrastructure, and if we even have the capacity to serve the, the numbers that are coming down from this RENA cycle. Yeah, I think, like Yumi said, time and staff resources, you know, we're, we're a pretty small city, and so we don't have anybody who's devoted to housing all the time. We have a staff of two in the planning department. So, and the housing element law is growing more and more complex, and more time-consuming, and it's going to just require a lot more resources than it previously has. So I think that's kind of, in a nutshell, our challenges.
Thanks, Amy. How about Gary, and then Brian?
Good to go, Brian. Yeah, sure. Yeah, the city has very limited vacant land, and we're really, I think we're more constrained than just about anybody else up here, in terms of looking at our geographical boundaries, the waterways, you know, the steep topography. We've kind of limited our, limited our city boundaries, just because of limited development constraints of, of the environment. And so here, we're asked to, you know, triple up our, on all of our numbers, and we're going to have to do some very creative planning for sites inventory for the next cycle. Some of the meaningful things that we learned is the, using maybe surplus sites that we, that the city has, we're going to be looking at that, perhaps looking at our annexation areas, but right now, we're really limited, and to see a 300% increase in our low-income housing RENA is completely insane.
And for the unincorporated county, I'd say our challenges are very similar. It's finding the appropriate sites to rezone to higher density, because the very low categories usually only qualify if you have a high-density zoning, and so finding the right sites with the infrastructure to support it, and as well as down with the, the WUI, the wildland urban interface requirements, makes it very difficult.
Thank you, Brian. So we have about five more minutes, and I think this is kind of the important question for the meeting today, is, you know, what are the panel's thoughts on implementing regional strategies to incentivize housing production across different localities? And I think it'd be good to start with Gary on the end, and then we'll just work our way back.
Yeah, you know, just the, the discussion from HCD was interesting, they changed the methodology on us, and I, hopefully, they'll change the, the approach to inventory, they, you know, the, the sites inventory guidelines, the state is very stringent, and it comes from these, the statutes, which are some, some very difficult to work with, to apply a one-size-fits-all, if we're in Los Angeles, or we're in Nevada City, it doesn't matter. So, and we're supposed to meet these requirements that could expand. So, you know, that, that's the challenge that I, I see, and I'm, and I'm trying to figure out the equitability, the methodology that applies statewide. There's some areas, like in Salt Lake Tahoe, they have one unit more than last RENA cycle, so I'm trying to get, wrap my arms around that. I think with some creative planning and working with our regional partners, particularly the county, city, Grass Valley, that there's ways to solve it regionally. I don't see how our little town can meet those numbers, but I could be wrong. So I think it's an process of, you know, working regionally to make this work. We're all in together, we're all in the same boat, as HCD put it. We can change the distribution between the agencies, and perhaps, as a collaboration, we can work through this to make it work.
Thanks, Gary. Yumi, do you want to address the regional approach?
I think the town is always interested in collaborating with our agency partners. Within the Town of Truckee, we often work with our local agencies, as well as with Placer County, since they are more, they are more closely aligned with our, what our community considers our region, the Tahoe-Truckee region. So I think the town is welcome, is interested in talking about programs and policies that we can incorporate into our housing element, where we work as a group. I think we've discussed as a town, a housing authority within the town to kind of come up with solutions, but that's in our work plan, it hasn't yet been implemented.
Yeah, I agree, when everybody else is up here, but, you know, I think perhaps we could, Grass Valley is always interested in collaborating with the other agencies, and, you know, one strategy that might be helpful is, since a lot of our properties that are vacant are fragmented, or small, or constrained somehow, might be beneficial to try to attract developers that can, you know, utilize lands that are disconnected, that are across jurisdictions, just to make it pencil for them, because I think a lot of times, that's the problem, we can't get developers up here and make projects pencil out for them. So, working collaboratively in that way, I think, could be helpful.
And for the county, yeah, obviously, I don't think we can do it alone individually. A lot of people don't recognize city and county boundaries, a lot of services are within the cities, a lot of the infrastructure, so I think collaborating in a number of ways, whether it's partnering, it's sharing resources, looking for grant opportunities, co-applying, and looking how we can develop our individual housing elements to, to meet the regional needs, I think is going to be extremely important, and working together, but also outside partners, nonprofits, or other low-income developers, et cetera.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, panel, for being here, and I imagine there'll be questions from the group for the panel, so we'll turn it over to you.
We are unfortunately low on time, we can do a few questions for the panel. Amy will be coming back, so you can bombard her with all the questions that you would have asked the entire panel, and she's a pro. Good. So I'll let Tyler lead this, but we'll just take a few questions for the panel.
Adam, I have a question for you, over here.
Go ahead, Hardy.
Yeah, thanks. This is a question for the panel. You talk about, excuse me, regional solutions, the administrative leasing privilege from the federal government, and taking land and giving it to local governmental jurisdictions for housing. We tried it on Hobart Mills, super tough to navigate, cumbersome, but the Town of Truckee, and the county, and others have kind of navigated that through CHP on the state side for the Pacific Crest Commons. My question is, is it worth approaching state and federal, and maybe even local special district jurisdictions, and asking them, hey, what land's available, and putting that up on some sort of developer portal, or some joint jurisdictional activity to promote those open parcels for development? Is that something that's realistic, or is that, I know the federal government side can be difficult to swim that whole process, but it's worth talking a little bit about and thinking a little bit about?
The panel's fighting over who should respond to that question.
I mean, I think, I think state law already creates a surplus, allows us to go through that process. The CHP site into the Town of Truckee was one, part of that process. The state was the lead on that project, and wasn't a town project, so, and that was because it was considered a surplus land once CHP moved to the site over by our rec district. So I think that there is a pathway already that exists. I think the town, or any of these jurisdictions, if they so chose, could move forward with creating a list of public lands, as long as we're collaborating with our special districts, identifying the lands that they may think could be surplus, but I believe that that is always part of the process, to determine what lands they need to keep, or what lands they don't need to keep, and if they do identify it as a surplus land, then it would be part of that program, could be potentially for, for housing. Also, within Town of Truckee, with our general plan update, we did identify housing for students and employees of the school district as a, as a new zoning that we would allow within the Town of Truckee.
And I'll note that-
There's a new statute, and it's not fair, it's a couple of years old, but it has to do with working with schools, and there's, you know, a lot of agencies, like Modoc County, which I work for, a lot of the schools are abandoned, what do we, how do we reuse those? And so HCD, and I think the legislature recognized that, and actually has some programs to help convert those to housing units.
Additional questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you to Tyler and the panel. Up next, we've got the workforce housing deep dive with Lynn Baumgartner, Town of Truckee, program analyst in our, in the housing division there. Lynn, do you want to be right here?
Fair enough.
Fair enough. All right, here's Lynn. Also, in case this is a factor in the sound issues we've been having, if you have a microphone in front of you, and the light is green, and you're not talking, press the button until it's not green. Cool.
My name is Lynn Baumgartner. I am the housing analyst at the Town of Truckee. I'm here to talk about workforce housing. I also have Isaac Landman from Placemate, and Heidi Alstead, who is with the Tahoe-Truckee Workforce Housing Agency. So what is workforce housing? I'm going to give a very general definition, because all sorts of entities, agencies, organizations use workforce housing to refer to specific things in their area, but it also has a more general definition, which is housing specifically for households who are employed in a jurisdiction or specific geographic area. Sorry, two at once here. So while that's the very general definition, there are more kind of pieces to workforce housing. It often has an income cap, not always, but often. It often has a requirement for number of hours worked within that boundary, so maybe it's full-time, maybe it's 20 hours a week, maybe it's a certain number of hours over the course of a year, but there's usually some sort of hours requirement. It may have a requirement on the percentage of the income earned within the boundary. So if a household has, you know, two working adults, one works within the boundary, one works without, or outside of it, the program might have a requirement that 51% of the income is earned within the boundary. It may have an onsite work requirement. For example, some programs are okay with remote workers who are working for businesses based locally. Some programs may require you to report to an office, and some, it may also have a client-served location requirement, so for people that own their own business, or, you know, have a sole proprietorship, they might be required to serve clients within the boundary, not nationwide or worldwide. So next, I'm going to compare workforce housing, affordable housing, and employer housing. So affordable housing, we've already defined workforce housing. Affordable housing, especially with the capital A affordable, is what we call it a lot, is housing that is deed-restricted to individuals or households that qualify as low-income, which is usually 80% of area median income or below, and typically for a period of 55 years. Sometimes it can be up to 120, but generally, it's 80% and below. And then employer housing is provided to employees of a specific employer, so an example of that might be the ski instructors that live on-site at Palisades or Sugar Bowl. While employer housing, workforce housing, and affordable housing are all separate entities or descriptions, there is definitely some crossover. I'm sorry, I tried to make kind of a Venn diagram showing how they're similar and different, obviously, there's probably exceptions for all of these. But workforce housing is generally locally funded, local programs and policies that may or may not be deed-restricted. There's often an income limit, there is a local employment requirement, sometimes there's no income limit. While employer housing is tied to a specific employer, not just the region, it's generally privately funded, and usually has no income limit. While affordable housing does have that income limit, but it's a specific low-income requirement, it's state or federally funded, and is generally always deed-restricted. So alongside workforce housing, there's a lot of other housing terms that get used, and I wanted to just define some of those other terms, so you hear them out there, you can kind of compare and contrast to workforce housing. So achievable or attainable housing is, refers to housing for the middle-income households who make too much to qualify for traditional subsidized housing, but cannot afford market-rate housing. And it's sometimes used interchangeably with workforce housing, but achievable, attainable doesn't necessarily have that tie to the local workforce. Missing middle housing can sometimes have the same definition as achievable or attainable, so it's the housing for a specific group of people, but it's often used, or more commonly, I should say, it refers to is actually a specific type of housing, so small, multi-unit housing types that are compatible with single-family homes in a neighborhood, so duplex, triplex, townhomes, cottages, and sometimes all the way up to a sixplex. So missing middle housing is used in two different ways, and so sometimes you have to be able to tell by context. Then I have a lowercase a affordable housing, so that's housing that is affordable, which means paying no more than 30% of your income towards housing costs. And so workforce housing isn't necessarily, it doesn't necessarily come from a policy or a program, it could just be the housing that is available for your local workforce that is affordable at lower than 30% of your income towards housing costs. And then finally, affordable by design is housing that is naturally lower cost to, to design, due to design factors like density, unit size, reduced parking, et cetera. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the goals and benefits of workforce housing using the Town of Truckee as an example. So the Town of Truckee, the goal of our housing program is to strengthen our community, economy, and environment by increasing the inventory of homes our local workers can afford to rent or buy. In 2022, our town council set a goal to deed-restrict 10% of our housing stock by 2032. We're at a little below 6% right now, but we are creeping up there, and we've designed a lot of programs and policies to help us reach that goal. And the reason that we have these goals is the, is to have this workforce housing is the benefit, and these are, you know, there are many, many benefits, but some of, just some examples are, for the community, workforce housing keeps essential workers in the community, it improves quality of life, and encourages community involvement. Economically, it improves employee retention, increases the size and quality of the local applicant pool, and supports small local businesses. And environmentally, it reduces GHG emissions, which is another one of our council priorities, by reducing commute length. And so I just have a few examples of workforce housing program and policy, I'm not going to talk about them very much, just because we are short on time, but for example, rental programs, like lease to locals and rooted renters, which my colleague Isaac is going to talk more about, lease to locals exist in Truckee, Eastern Placer County, South Lake Tahoe, Washoe County, other places in California, and nationwide, which is really awesome. There's home purchase assistance programs for workforce housing, so different than the traditional first-time home buyer that have a much lower income cap. So the Truckee Home Access Program is our deed restriction program. Placer County has a workforce housing preservation program. The MARTA's Fund Down Payment Assistance is a local foundation that does, first, a down payment assistance program. There are developer programs out there, Homegrown Housing is one that we're currently developing in Truckee, or the funding mechanism exists for developers building new workforce housing, and my colleague Yumi is working on a development code piece of that for workforce housing as well, and Placer County has Launchpad, which is another program for new development. And then finally, workforce housing policies, like the Truckee's, inclusionary workforce housing requirements, and Placer County has an employee accommodation ordinance and fee for new development. So there's just a few quick examples, and now I'm going to pass things on to Isaac.
Can everyone hear me? Great. My name's Isaac Landman. I'm here with Placemate, I'm the Associate Market Director. We are the program developer, co-developer, and administrator of two of the town's workforce housing rental- of two of the town's workforce housing rental programs. One is called Lease to Locals, one is called Rooted Renters. I'm here to talk a little bit about Placemate as an organization and then give you a little bit more details on, on these programs as well. So Placemate has a vision as a, oh, shoot.
I'll click this way.
Thank you. Placemate has a vision of a world where communities thrive because local employees can find stable housing, and we are working towards that vision by trying to accomplish our mission of helping local employees secure housing in tourism-based communities, economies, through innovative public and private partnerships like the one we have with the Town of Truckee and, and across the country. So to get a little bit more specific about our work, we explain our, what we do as, as being an operational implementation partner. The story of Placemate really mirrors the development and growth of our programs in the Town of Truckee. So we have helped to develop two programs, Lease to Locals and Rooted Renters, that we also administer with the town, and I'll get more specific about what that means. So Lease to Locals is our long-term rental conversion program. It provides property owners with a financial incentive, a one-time cash grant, to convert their unit to be a new seasonal or long-term rental for local workforce members. And Lease to Locals allows local governments, the town, to efficiently tap, officially, efficiently accomplish workforce housing rental goals by tapping into the existing housing stock for, as a workforce housing solution. So to be more specific about how Lease to Locals works, in order to participate, if you're a homeowner, your property needs to be located in the Town of Truckee, and it cannot have been a long-term rental at any point in the last 12 months. It can't have had full-time tenants, again, because Lease to Locals is focused on that long-term rental conversion, getting property owners to start long-term renting. If you're participating, that means you're renting to a household of at least 50% locally-employed adults. And our definition of someone who's locally-employed is someone that works at least 20 hours per week within the Tahoe Truckee Unified School District geographic boundaries. And that's actually a broader geographic boundary than the Town of Truckee. That stretches from Tohoma up into Truckee, over through Soda Springs, and down through Kings Beach. So again, if you work for an employer that's in that area at least 20 hours a week, you'd be considered qualified, a qualified tenant. There's also an average income cap that cannot exceed 150% of the area median income. So Lease to Locals is focused on that missing middle housing, achievable housing. This, because these are local funds, they can be used above the affordable requirements. And then if you're participating in Lease to Locals, you can either sign a seasonal lease, so a five-to-11-month lease, or a long-term lease, a 12-month or longer lease. And you can rent your property at or below $3,500 a month. That's just a, that's a blanket rent cap regardless of unit size. So I'm displaying here the, the incentive amounts for Lease to Locals. The incentives vary based on, again, the length of the lease that you sign and the number of qualifying tenants, so the number of local workers that you're renting your property to. They max out at four incentives regardless of lease length. And the other detail I'll highlight again is that these are a one-time deal. They don't roll over lease after lease, year after year, because Lease to Locals is focused on getting property owners to start long-term renting. And once you receive your full incentive payment, you essentially graduate from Lease to Locals, and there's not additional incentives after that point. So we've been administering Lease to Locals with the town since 2020. We're currently in our sixth year of, of program operation, and we're nearly at 240 properties who have participated. That's getting up to close to 600 people housed and an average rent per property of just over $2,500 per month, an average rent per bedroom of just under $1,100 per month. So, you know, even though we have that, that $3,500 a month rent maximum, people are still, owners are still setting a rental price that's appropriate for smaller units, which also speaks to how, how the, the Lease to Locals program works in the broader housing market. It allows property owners to decide what's fair for them, and it's an attractive way to participate in the program. The one other detail I will highlight here is we have an average adult income of just under $60,000 per year. So just because there is that 150% area median income average maximum, the program is still, on average, serving a much lower income population. Another stat that we're really proud of with the Lease to Locals program is of the 198 properties that have graduated from the program, meaning their lease term is up. They've, they've received an incentive to convert their unit to a long-term rental, and then that lease term ends. At the end of that lease term, we ask the owners, we ask the tenants, hey, what are your plans? What are you going to be doing going forward? And 71% of those respondents answer that they're planning on continuing to long-term rent. And so to go back to my previous slide, where you see this average incentive per property of $7,700, it, it highlights how efficient this, this use of government funds really is in that you're investing $7,700 to get a property to start long-term renting, and then that's actually going further than just that one lease term. So compared to, you know, the cost of building new units, this is a really efficient and fast way to create housing that's relatively modestly affordable. Going forward too. So the last program I'll, I'll highlight that we've worked on with the town is called Rooted Renters. And the, and Rooted Renters really started as, we, the development of Rooted Renters began from the feedback that we've received through Lease to Locals in speaking to owners that were already long-term renting, who said, hey, you know, you're providing these incentives to property owners to start long-term renting, but I've already been renting, I've already been quote-unquote "doing the right thing", and the pressures on me are getting higher, there, there's more financial pressure than ever for me to move to something else and stop long-term renting. Can you help me out? Can you develop a program for my situation? And so Rooted Renters is focused on long-term rental preservation as, as compared to conversion of Lease to Locals. And the way that it works is it provides property owners with a cash incentive that stretches over a three-year period in exchange for them locking in their property at a more affordable rate, again, for local workers. Similarly, this allows, allows local jurisdictions and, and the Town of Truckee to efficiently address their mid-range housing goals. So this, again, stretches over a three-year period rather than one lease term, and still doesn't require any new building to help them achieve their workforce housing goals. So here are the program, the program guidelines. Again, the property has to be located in the Town of Truckee, and to participate, owners need to sign a 12-month lease or renew their existing lease with a qualified tenant group. Tenant qualifications are the same as Lease to Locals. 50% of the adults need to work locally, and the average household income cannot exceed 150% AMI. And then on my next two slides, what you see here are the incentive amounts. I'm seeing that some of my headers have gotten cut off, but the incentive amounts, the, the two details I'll highlight on these is that they're based on the size of the housing unit, the number of bedrooms in that housing unit, and they're issued in four payments that get progressively larger the longer that you rent your property. So the thinking here being, what we're trying to incentivize is property owners to, to lock their, their, their unit in at an achievable rate and keep renting it at an achievable rate by, you know, dangling a carrot to say, the longer you rent, the more money you're going to make through this program in addition to rent. So here you see the, the, the maximum rental rates, which are capped at a 7% increase each year. I'll let you look at them for a minute. Go on.
And just to give a little context about the rental prices, the market is more like 1,500 a bedroom in Truckee. So these are this and the Lease to Locals statistics of what the rent's being charged per bedroom. These are significantly lower than the, than market, just for context.
Yeah, the, when we were developing the program, we were shooting for around $1,000 a bedroom. So that's what you see here. So when we launched the program, town council allocated $500,000 in incentives for the first pilot year in 2024. And the interest that we saw in, in the program was really substantial. We, we had 65 property owners submit preliminary application forms, but we only had space for what wound up being 23 property participants. And so in response to that enormous interest, this year, town council doubled the funding. There's a million dollars in total incentives, and these incentives, that $500,000 and a million dollar amount, those are the amounts that are allocated for the full three years of incentives. This year thus far, we've received 83 property applicants. We're still in the process of, of working through all of the applicants, and we're projecting that that will provide enough funding, or the funding that's, that has been allocated will go out to around 45, 46 property participants. So this is my last slide. These are the results thus far of Rooted Renters. We've had 54 properties participate, housing 133 people. The average rent per property is similar to Lease to Locals, a little less, still on, under that $2,500 a month amount. And the incentives are, are on average larger than Lease to Locals, but the amount of housing that's being incentived, incentivized with these grants is a three-year period as opposed to one lease period. And you do see a slightly hard, higher average annual income per tenant, but it's still far below that 150% area median income amount. So the, we're expecting these stats, these stats are going to rise as we continue admitting applicants to the program. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Okay, great. Heidi Alstead, Executive Director for the Truckee Tahoe Workforce Housing Agency. Thanks for having us today. I think we're all pretty excited about our programs, so we're excited to share them with you. We facilitate workforce housing solutions for the Truckee Tahoe workforce. We are considered a joint powers authority, and that's what I'm kind of here to, today to talk about, a solution to housing. We were, we have seven member agencies that are listed here, and a couple of them are in the room today, Nevada County and the Town of Truckee. We were founded in 2020, literally March of 2020, and we all know what that happened then, to provide housing access to our seven-member agencies and their 2,300 employees. So we're there as a support mechanism. In 2023, we expanded our services to include the general workforce and not just the employees of those seven-member agencies. And then since then, we've served over 1,000 people with our services. Just to give you a quick timeline of how we evolved, we have here in 2018, we had a burrito meeting. This was an offshoot of the Mountain Housing Council meetings where we talked about some of the public agencies and special districts did not, were having a hard time recruiting and retaining employees doing, due to housing. So in 2020, like I said, we launched our organization, and then we launched our long-term rental program. So that's a program where we work with the local homeowners who have a property, a home that they'd like to rent out to one of our employees in the region. So we launched that program and provided a small incentive for that. And then in 2021, we did a mapping exercise of our member agencies and their surplus land to see where can we build housing on one of the member agencies' own land. And so in 2022, we launched our home, our home purchase navigation services. So that's where we support the community, who, people who are interested in buying homes, we support them with the different mechanisms within the region, and some of these programs here that we collaborate with, so we refer them to those programs. And then in 2023, we launched our strategic plan, which was a pretty large strategic plan. We've since modified that, but basically the gist of that is expansion of services, looking at how are we going to help the general workforce? Because right now, we're serving over 50, 50% of who we serve is with the general workforce. So that's a big component. Also, looking at a piece of land the school district owns that we're looking at a housing development project there with the joint powers authority, with the different member agencies. And so we're working on that right now and looking at the feasibility. We've done all the studies, and so we're kind of at that decision-making point right now. And then also, we, we're looking at acquisition of properties as well. That's a little bit on hold, but that's something that's on our radar. So for the JPA or Joint Powers Authority, you know, like I said, we have seven member agencies, and these, this is just a funding structure I just wanted to show you to give you an idea of what it takes to, to do this work. And so the seven member agencies all pay a fee into our organization that helps with our operations, and then also with programming as well. And so just want to give you, it's, it's based on employee count. So however many employees you have in the Town of Truckee or at the school district, those, that's how we calculate the fees. We're looking at a different fee structure right now, and we'll be talking about that in the next couple of months, around a fee for service so that it's not reliant on all of our member agency members, and that we can go out and find grant funding and that kind of thing. So why form a JPA? And so for one, there's a regional collaboration. Am I too fast? You know, really, really looking at regional collaboration and the different housing programs, and how can we all best work together. Also, shared capacity and joint powers. So that's, that's really the key for a joint powers authority. Stronger funding position, so when we look at going out for funding and grants, we can better position ourselves as a larger entity. And then also authority and flexibility around pop, property acquisition and programming. And also, we're looking at, you know, we've been talking about streamlining services, and really, our goal as a joint powers authority is to really become the one-stop shop so you can contact us and we can help navigate the housing landscape for you, whether you're renting, purchasing, et cetera. And then also, it helps with long-term stability as well. So the Mountain Housing Council has, was created in 2016. We're, again, an offshoot of that. And in 2023, they contracted with consultants to provide a housing needs assessment, and that has since been updated and will go out to the public in the next couple of months. So pretty excited about that data. In 2023, almost 8,200 total housing units were needed in our, in our region. And so our organization really focuses on the missing middle, that 80% on up, because at the time, there were no housing programs to help facilitate and support that income bracket. So like I said, one of our, one of our goals is to become this one-stop shop. I apologize for the typos I just noticed. But we, you know, we have a home rental match program where, again, like I said, we match homeowners with renters, and we no longer provide incentives, but we, we really also refer to Placemate for that program as well. And the big part of what we do is the housing concierge services. So that's, again, people call us, email us, hey, I can't find housing, I need to get a place. And we're looking at long-term housing, long-term rentals versus short-term. So the many of the ski resorts have seasonal employees. We don't really have that capacity to support that population, but we really try and provide all of the different elements and in our region around all the housing programs, as well as educate homeowners to, or people who want to purchase a home as well. One of the big things I think that makes us pretty strong is the collaboration that we have with our member agencies, and then also like with Placemate and the Tahoe Housing Hub. Again, we refer all of, you know, anything that people need, we refer out to these other agencies, and also still work with the Mountain Housing Council, which is sunsetted, but the community foundation continues to play a big part in our community around housing as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great. We have time to answer a couple of questions. Any questions?
You know, in terms of housing market, I'm a firm believer in, in, you know, open market, supply and demand. The more housing supply you can provide, the more housing's available, prices go down, more affordability, even at the lower end. Has there been any analysis of how your, your efforts have achieved maybe more lower-income housing availability?
I mean, a lot, one of the things we say is, you know, there's not going to be one solution that solves all the housing issues in our region. You know, it's everything's just a tool in the toolbox to help go towards it. You know, one of the things we You know, one of the things we have seen, it's anecdotal, but when we started doing lease to locals with that $3,500 rent cap, we saw rents on the open market go closer to that 3,500 rent cap because people were like, hey, I can get this place for 3,500, why not this place? We did see some, especially of that like three-bedroom home size, go to, go around that 3,500. One of the things we are, we do have as a housing program, as I mentioned, Homegrown Housing, which is a new development for workforce housing. So the idea behind that program is for developers who want to build workforce housing. So we have an income cap for that one at 180% AMI, so higher than the state or federally-funded programs, but still, you know, under, you know, but still not completely open market. And so they can get up to 110,000 per unit to deed-restrict their new development to 180% AMI and the local worker requirement. And we are actually in process with our first project through Homegrown Housing. I think Yumi may have mentioned it. It's a partnership between the town of Truckee and the developer on some town-owned land and it's going to be 12 units, two low-income to meet our inclusionary requirement and 10 that will be deed-restricted through that new program. And we're hoping that it can be a model for future development in the, in the region to just help get some of that new housing on the ground that is, you know, right in that middle, that doesn't quite pencil compared to traditional affordable low-income housing or full open market, you know, higher-end homes. And so that's what that program's doing while the other programs like lease to locals are taking the homes that already exist. As you've mentioned, we have close to 50% vacancy in Truckee due to many of the homes being for seasonal or occasional use. And for the people that aren't using them for vacation rentals, something like lease to locals helps, you know, maybe get over that hump of letting it sit empty or only short-term renting it or whatever. And, you know, sometimes we call it an extra-large security deposit to get people in that long-term rental market as well.
This may be for our board. Has there been any discussion of bringing programs like lease to locals or rooted renters beyond Truckee? Or would you consider letting workforce or people from the city of Truckee rent or lease beyond the Truckee city limits?
So we work in, I believe Placemate has now worked in 15 tourist towns, tourist economies around the country. I don't, I'm not certain whether or not we've had discussions at the Nevada County level. But we also work in Eastern Placer County on the, in the north shore of Lake Tahoe and in Washoe County. So whether or not we, we are, I don't believe we're currently exploring a partnership with the, with Nevada County, but we certainly are open to it and lease to locals can be designed to meet really the housing needs of, of any community that would like to partner with us.
Thanks to Lynn and Isaac and Heidi. We're going to take another 10-minute break, which usually, but not always, lasts about 10 minutes. And then we'll have Amy Wolfson and time for public comment there at the end. Thank you all for being here. See you in 10. Welcome back. Hi, Joe. Thank you. Welcome back, everybody. We're going to begin with the Local Housing Solutions Showcase. Afterwards, we'll have time for public comment. Everyone says I bang the gavel too loud, but no one's listening when I do. Scared Joan.
Could everybody take their seats, please? The mayor's calling the meeting back to order.
Thanks, Dean. There you go. Listen to that guy. So I'm going to welcome up Amy Wolfson again, and she's the city planner for the city of Grass Valley. Go for it. She's going to invite up some folks. Amy Wolfson, everybody, and then some public comment.
Welcome to this segment of the meeting for housing solutions. As you've heard today, we have a kind of a daunting task before us for the, the various jurisdictions to meet our arena numbers. And so besides that, you know, I think all of our, our jurisdictions, all of our, the politicians across the jurisdictions are interested in making sure we are meeting the needs of our community, especially in terms of affordable housing and, you know, trying to attract young families and young adults to our communities. So it's going to take a lot of innovation and thinking outside the box to meet these challenges. So the goal of this panel discussion is to explore practical and innovative solutions to local housing challenges, and I apologize for my voice, I'm getting over a little cold. Through collaboration efforts between public agencies, nonprofits, and innovation to explore what is working, what, what needs improvement and what's next in our housing for our region. So I'm happy to introduce our panelists today. They are doing the good work in our community to provide needed housing and some of them are working on very innovative solutions. So I will introduce to my left here is Morgan Bierschenk with Geoship and then Gus Pacera with the Regional Housing Authority, Travis Duckworth with the Seoul Learning Institute, and Lorraine Larson with, with Nevada County Habitat for Humanity. So I have, I will just start with a first question, which any or all of the panelists are welcome to, to answer. We have a lot of exciting housing efforts moving into the next housing cycle. What do you think are the biggest barriers to increasing affordability and attainable housing in Nevada County? And I'll just push that over to anybody who wants to answer. The green, press the green button.
There we go. Hi, I'm Gus Pacera, Regional Housing Authority. I'll, I'll start it off. Just a tiny background, we operate not only in Nevada County, but in four other counties that are Nevada and Yuba and Kalusa counties. And we're a joint venture developer and we've been pretty successful in all four of the counties we serve. And, oh, as you can see, some of our projects are up there. Hurdles, funding, funding, funding. It always comes down to that. Yeah, there's other issues we navigate through, you know, NIMBYism and, you know, political will, but for the most part, it's funding. And I will say that, like it or hate it, the big beautiful bill that the Trump administration passed has a very robust improvement to the low-income housing tax credit program, which is the largest source of funding that we use as, as project developers. So some really good came out of that. The bad thing is that on the state side, the funding has dried up. The, the last bond from 2018, there's no more funding left over. So if anybody's familiar with State HCD's calendar of notices of funding, there's, there's only breadcrumbs. So I would say right now, we're looking good on the federal side and in the future, not looking so good on the, on the state side.
I forgot to mention, please go ahead and introduce kind of the work that you guys are doing in addition to talking about the barriers, because some, some folks might not be familiar with all your projects.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lorraine Larson. I'm the Executive Director of Nevada County Habitat for Humanity and we essentially are low-income home ownership program, serving folks 30 to 80% AMI to purchase an affordable home here in Nevada County. And I would say that probably our biggest barrier is, I mean, although cost is a big barrier, the cost is kind of related to infrastructure. If we can get larger projects off the ground and get through the regulatory hurdles, you know, we can build, you know, build ready and shovel-ready pads, you know, then we can build all day long, you know? It's kind of like, that's where we rock and roll, that's where we can do it. But it's just getting those, those approval, long approval times and timelines and the cost of the infrastructure, like infill projects are great for us, but larger ones, which is a challenge, right? And so those infill projects that, where are the utilities? Are they a million miles away or are they close? All those things make a big difference. And so those are our biggest barriers. This community really is great about supporting the construction of a home, but all the stuff that's not very exciting, like moving dirt and digging to get the sewers in, aren't sewers interesting and exciting? That's the stuff that's our biggest challenge to get our projects.
I'll just use it as an opportunity to say hi. I'm Travis with Seoul Learning Institute and Seoul Village and Seoul Tiny. And we build custom tiny homes and I launched that business as a teacher in the community to showcase how businesses can operate a little more kindly, a little bit more generously, a little bit with a smaller bottom line. And we are using it as a platform to now build a cohousing community within city limits because of the infrastructure costs, 50 to 100 homes ranging from 400 to 1,500 square feet, four families. And for those exiting the workforce, so we can free up some of those larger homes from people that are just one or two people living on them. And we're doing that through a bunch of community efforts. One of the most exciting things is how we fund that. So I'd say like funding is a huge issue for us, but for us, it's mostly that there's not a legal infrastructure in place. We are raising our capital through the community to build homes for people by people. We started off by, we're raising a couple hundred thousand bucks through leveraging my assets at 10% return. And we have, one of our local judges wrote that paperwork. We have some of my high school students involved throwing in 500 bucks at a time. And we're, we're getting up close to a million bucks of funding raised in that way, but that's not enough to do the housing development that we're doing. So we're looking at other legal ways for us to start taking in assets. My goal is to try to keep money in the community. If I buy a $500,000 house from you, I'm going to spend 500 grand, that's going to go in your pocket and the other 500 grand is going to leave our community through a mortgage lender. And so residential construction is a huge leak in keeping money in our local economy. And so raising money for people is a big part of what we're doing. Infill projects and getting that piece in place is the next thing that we're going to be handling. We are keeping a couple of like non-negotiables for this cohousing community and one of them is that it has to be within city limits or has to be annexable by the city, because that's the only way we can pencil it out for the sewer treatment, septic treatment issues. When we get into county stuff, even with this county house ordinance that we just passed, it's too expensive to do anything of, of scale, buying a piece of property, running utilities to it, putting in a 10 to $60,000 septic system, and that septic system being the biggest one is our hurdle. As far as regulatory issues to address that I would love to see in our next like policy initiatives are to work with environmental health to allow for alternative toilets such as incinerator toilets. I'm a big fan of composting toilets at some scale, but they have a risk of E. coli getting into our waterways, incinerator toilets don't. We worked or had a Navo come out and talk about how to create pump systems for entry-level starter homes, like tiny homes. And in a traditional setting, they're coming out every two to three weeks at 600 bucks per pop. If we can do alternative toilets and gray water systems a little bit more easily, then we're coming out every six months and that makes it more affordable.
Hey, guys. I'm Morgan, the founder of Geoship. So we're kind of taking a little different take on this and that we're really looking at developing deep technology to transform housing from physics-first principles. So really looking at like what is the material, what is the geometry, what is the method of manufacturing for housing on earth, you know, 50 years, 20 years from now? We're kind of, you know, over the last year, we've hired about 20 engineers from Tesla and SpaceX and Apple and they've all kind of relocated out here and we set up a pilot facility. We're installing our first, we've developed kind of engineering prototypes up until now, but now doing our first like full-size customer home. And it's really like the home is a fully-integrated product. So similar to how cars are manufactured and whatnot, it's really transforming housing at a really fundamental level. And we're kind of, funding was a big issue for a while and now we're kind of just over that hump where we've got just enough investors and whatnot on board and can show that this, this is not just a local problem, this is a, you know, state and national, even global problem in terms of housing and climate resilience and jobs. So I think the biggest, one of the exciting aspects of what we're doing is that it's really, can be radically affordable at scale, but it's also climate resilient and 100% non-toxic, like next-level health benefits of homes so that it's really creating a vision that people can be, bring hope for, that our next generations have, you know, what our grandparents had, which is just adequate, affordable housing in communities that are aligned with their kind of values and vision. And, you know, I think the biggest obstacle for us now is just time. The technology's here, we're on the, on the path and at some point here, the whole paradigm is going to, is shifting already and that's what's time.
Amy, if I may, to stay on the area of barriers, one of the beautiful things about living in the state of California, and Governor Newsom has been a friend to affordable housing, is that we have on the books a lot of by-write codes now in the state of California for affordable housing. So as a, as a project developer, we never like to use that politically. In Nevada County, everybody, everyone's always been very friendly to our agency, all three, two cities, one town, one county. We've been successful to do projects everywhere. But that, that is, that's a tool that's always there. There, there's a lot of by-write language in the code now that's very helpful to get projects through entitlements.
Just as a follow-up, excuse me, is there, is there a policy change or a partnership that you feel would help with whatever barrier? And recognize you're talking with a lot of local policy legislators here tonight. So if there, if there are local policies or partnerships that would help you guys achieve success and get over those barriers, is there something you'd like to suggest to our politicians here tonight?
Sure. I can, I'll start with that one. You know, I, I think partnerships and policy is kind of the, what happens when hearts and minds are incoherent, you know, when we're aligned on what we want for the community. And I think just having open dialogue and conversation to kind of align our intention is the beginning and then the partnerships really come out of that. And of course, there's many different partnerships, opportunities, I think, for public and private that can really help us alleviate this challenge quicker than we can imagine.
I have no suggestions. We've been very successful in both in the unincorporated and in the town of Truckee and Nevada City and Grass Valley. I mean, you showcased a few of our projects up there, Cashin's Field, Lone Oak, Brunswick Commons, we, you know, we broke ground with Pacific Crest Commons. I mean, we, I, you guys have rolled out the red carpet for us, so I, I'm good.
I guess I have to say the same. I mean, we've, we've been working with the cities and, and county on, the Regional Housing Trust Fund has really supported us. But just in getting together and coming up with creative ways to help us move these things forward, it really does come down to sitting down and having, I mean, it seems simple, but just having a conversation about what are the barriers. A lot of times we're working in our silos and I'm totally guilty of that. And when we actually talk to people about what the barriers are, it's amazing how many people come to the table to try to help us overcome those barriers. And so municipalities go and the local, the county and cities, it's been a great situation. And I don't know if this is the right time to talk about other types of partnerships, so I'll wait on that if you, unless you think it's now or later. Now's fine. So I think one of the things that really helped us, we want to, once we get our projects where we need to be accelerating with partnerships with local businesses who are looking to invest in workforce housing and who want to be in the community. But I have the real privilege of working with a lot of habitats across the country and a lot of the innovations they have come up with and, and, and being able to tap into that. And Habitat has a state support organization. And Habitat has a state support organization in California, Habitat California. And, you know, a lot of habitats increase and accelerate and build more affordable housing by having creative partnerships with developers or contractors in the local area. And so what Habitat can do is attract those incentives to make that worthwhile for them. And it's not just a financial incentive, it's also like keeping your folks going, keeping your people building, keeping your people working. And to come up with that, to help us build alongside of others who are more community-minded and who want to help us build more homes for this type of group. And so that's, that's one thing we're really looking for, is somebody to help us maybe share in the cost of infrastructure or a shared development with another organization, you know? Something very interesting came up just yesterday in Truckee that I'm not going to say anything about because I don't want to exit, but this could lead to something big there. And, but we would need to have a robust partnership with another developer or group of contractors that wants to kind of work alongside Habitat to make a range of affordable housing, not just what we do at this level, but maybe even that missing middle that everybody's talking about. So that, those are the things that we've been hearing about that are working well out there, and we're going to start really kind of heading in that direction and accelerating our progress towards those kinds of partnerships.
And I guess one more thing I could add to this is both, you know, that the innovations that Travis is making and that we're making are both based on doing more off-site. So you need industrial space, industrial buildings. I mean, Travis is in the building that we were in previously, where it took us a long time to find the building we're in now. There's no building in the county that is big enough for kind of our next step, we're having to build something. So we were really close to moving to Reno because we couldn't find a industrial space big enough to do what we wanted to do here.
Yeah, I think I can just basically echo most of what everyone's saying. Yeah, we're in the old GeoShip building, we're growing out of it, and it's tough to find a spot to go into. As far as partnerships go, you know, I always have used the analogy, I think humans have this innate desire to play a role in their village and their community, and I think that that's the same with, you know, municipalities or organizations. I'm a big fan of kind of having a discussion, talking through things, and then shutting up and going and doing the work. And so we're doing it, and if anybody wants to jump in and be a part of it, there's a wide open door there. And I usually just put out that invite to continue to share what we're doing, and then people can find a way to plug in and be a part of that. So I leave it to you to see where you might play a role. And then, yeah, you know, partnerships outside of, you know, municipalities and stuff unofficially very much, you know, we're talking with Sierra Memorial to expand their doctor and nurse program, traveling program. We're working with Briar Patch, we're talking with Briar Patch about, you know, creating employee housing. I just had a conversation yesterday with KVMR about having donors purchase some of these homes so they have reliable income after their funding just got gutted. There are ways for us to do this as a community. And then there's amazing partnerships, you know, since we're talking about that, you know, we, I like creating a skeleton that feasibility does something fundamentally needed, like housing, and then building off and fleshing that out. So we're working with the Curious Forge to curate 100 different mural artists, to put together a portfolio for people to move into the community to choose one of the murals that goes on each of the buildings so that we can highlight local artists as people come and visit what we're doing. We do a lot of open houses. 90% of the people that come to our open houses don't buy $150,000 tiny house, but they might, you know, hire one of our electricians when they do their next remodel, or they might hire a Marie Sol who did this gorgeous walnut table a little while ago. Like, we can support each other in the things that we do. And again, it's just, for me, it's an open invitation. And so, yeah, be a part of what we're doing, you know, we're just going to go ahead and do it, even if you're not. But be a part of it.
I've got a question specifically for Gus. The regional housing authority does, they are able to leverage a lot of different funding sources, and I wonder if you can just talk a little bit about that because I'm not sure. I've seen it, you know, in my capacity in Nevada City, and I was amazed at how, you know, how you guys connect all the pieces. But I wonder if you can just talk about that to this group here.
Sure. It's not easy, and it's getting harder. But any multi-family rental project starts at the local level. And step two, if you may, is always looking for state financing before we go in for tax credit financing. And if there is no local leverage, then we just don't proceed because we're not going to get anywhere. And so we've been very fortunate in partnering with the cities and counties here on different ways of applying for HCD money, using local money. And one of the innovative ways, I think, that we've used in other jurisdictions, and I think Nevada City did when we did the Cachen's project, was where we've encountered, cities and counties and jurisdictions have said, we want the project, we want to help with the project, we don't have any money for the project. So then the question comes, well, can you help with impact fee deferrals? And that's a touchy subject. And in some cases, it works, in some cases, it doesn't. Nevada City was willing to defer through a deferred loan, I think it was 50%, I think, of the impact fees, I believe it was, yeah, over a 55-year period. And that sounds crazy, but it's, that's the only way it's going to work to add leverage. And they loan back the value of those funds, it's secured through a deed of trust, you're in a lean position as a municipality, it accrues interest. And we've talked to school districts about doing that before. Hasn't worked here in Nevada County, but it has worked in Sutter County, it's worked in Yuba County, where school districts have done the same thing. So now they've become partners in building affordable housing. So that's one of the innovations, but I guess I would always say, it starts here, you know, at the local level. If there is no money for us to go after state and federal money locally, or land, or in some cases, as a housing authority, we can commit some vouchers, although we are running out of those. But that, that's where it starts. And if there's no money at the local level, it's hard for us to proceed.
And then for Morgan, are there regulatory or perception challenges you face introducing innovative technologies? I imagine it can be difficult to introduce, you know, a very new way of looking at housing to a community. And so just look, yeah, what are those kind of challenges?
Yeah, so just a few weeks ago, we got our California factory-built housing certification. So it means that it's kind of certified at a state level, so it reduces some of the local work that it takes to make sure that it's up to spec. And so that was a big, big thing. It also enables us to install, build homes really fast. So we're talking about three or four weeks from foundation to move in, because we don't have to have a lot of the subcontractors and stuff that you normally have, there's just like one crew of people that can come in and do the whole house from start to finish. And I think, you know, perception challenges, it's actually, it's kind of funny, it's actually the perception of perception that is the challenge. Like, most people look at it and they're like, hey, I'd live in that, but is anyone else, would anyone else live in that? It's a ceramic, all ceramic geodesic home. So it's round, it's basically the flower of life in 3D. So it looks different, but it's also, you know, most people actually prefer curved surfaces and whatnot. So it kind of hits on what people are actually looking for, but it's strange, so people feel like, well, I'd do it, but I don't know if anyone else would, but actually, a lot of people would. So it's kind of the perception of the perception that is the challenge more than the actual, you know, something different.
Along the same lines, Travis, what do you think local governments, what would you like them to understand about tiny homes on wheels? And how do you think the units fit within the regional housing strategy?
Yeah, like I said before, I think we've had a lot of success with the county, you know, working with planning and building to, to start to create obviously some pathways for making these into housing. We know we had this ordinance pass back in January. You know, it's not really a county issue, our perception is that we're building things on wheels, and those typically depreciate over time. We don't have resources to do traditional mortgages on them because they're more considered RV nationally. However, like in the area of workforce housing or just affordable housing, you know, similar to, you know, Morgan building offsite, I don't have crews and trucks and porta-potties and offsite insurance. I operate very openly and a lot of loopholes that may change, but because they are built on wheels and on a chassis, I'm building for about half of what it would cost for me to build the same quality home onsite. And then one of the other biggest, biggest hurdles that we're seeing in terms of affordable housing and residential construction is our fire insurance rates just continuing to go up. My main general contractor just had his go to 18 grand last January. He can get on the fare plan, but he's going to still be paying nine or 10. Our clients pay roughly about $1,000 bucks a year for full insurance, including fire, because they're on wheels. And that's through national programs, not through California-based programs, so it's less likely that they go away. So it's really right now, like it's, you know, I think the perception of building something on wheels, you know, we built a standard residential construction code, and they're inspected and certified as such. Our quality is pretty high. Because they're small, I can do that for an affordable price. So, you know, it's, when people think of things on wheels, we think of manufactured homes, we think of mobile homes, and those have a general, like, low value assessed to them by the general public. But, you know, that's part of my goal when I do this cohousing community, is we're doing a pretty high-end, missing-middle development, so that when people come and see, they can see the quality of what they are. And then, again, in transparency, my goal is to then do one for our most vulnerable, our low-income, and those experiencing homelessness, so that when people have pushback, we can say, well, you just said yes to this really beautiful housing development.
Can I get the slide on with just their website so that if people want to reach out to them after this panel discussion? So I've had the privilege of working with Lorraine on several projects in Grass Valley with Habitat for Humanity. Just wondering, you've got kind of a unique sweat equity model for building housing with your, you know, the recipients of the housing. How does that model adapt to our community's land and construction cost challenges?
Well, the sweat equity and volunteer model obviously is a big reason why our homes are going to be affordable. Our last four-bedroom home that we built, the mortgage, including impound for insurance and taxes, was just under $1,100, a brand-new home ownership, right? And so we did some creative things with the principal and, you know, and to adjust it a little bit to account for the increase in insurance, and we can do that. We carry the mortgages typically, but we're also looking at partnerships with lending institutions now to offer some kind of lending that might work for our folks. But the cost of labor being pretty much almost eliminated is the reason why we're able to do that. We have some other partnerships internationally and nationally where we can get reduced costs on building materials and appliances donated. Whirlpool donates all appliances to all Habitat homes across the country. So that's a big deal, right? That's, you know, three, four grand right there, maybe even more. And so those things are great, but it really is reducing the cost. Our homeowners put 500 hours in, and our construction crew is 99% volunteer, skilled, skilled construction folks, and that makes a huge difference, obviously, in the cost. And so when I talk about partnerships with local contractors, it has to be someone community-minded. Obviously, they need to make money, I understand that. They're not going to do everything for free, but what can we do to spread the costs over a number of units so that they can be made whole and we can build more homes?
What do you guys, just as, you guys can make any closing remarks you want to, but I'd like to hear what you think success would look like in five years for each of your respective housing efforts?
Yeah, I think success in five years for us is really that we're building homes that are more affordable than the current model and better in every category. So more healthy, more sustainable, fireproof or fire-resilient. So really actually building homes that are better than anything that's been built in the past and more affordable. And I think over the next five years, a lot of our goal is getting to, to kind of volume manufacturing, which is for us about 1,000 homes a year kind of level. And, and I think, you know, there's so much changing in the world in terms of AI and robotics and remote work and just the whole, like really understanding what does the next generation, even the current generation, really want in housing and in the community? And actually delivering on those things rather than delivering on something that is maybe more affordable, but not as desirable in different levels. So it's kind of a, becomes more of a stepping stone. We want to skip the stepping stone and get right to, you know, what people's highest aspiration is for living in harmony with the, with the land and their family and communities.
I would say, key word, advocate, advocate, advocate right now. If, success for us would be that our pipeline remains uninterrupted. And if the state housing bond that's projected to be on the ballot, we hope in June in the primaries, although the state legislature may push it to November, if that doesn't happen, you know, we're twiddling our thumbs. It is that critical that that bond passes. I mean, I can't even tell you how horrible it would be for production of affordable housing if we don't get that passed. So the last bond that passed was in 2018, it was for $4 billion. Those funds are exhausted. This bond would be $10 billion. So success for us is that bond has to pass in order for us to continue the pipeline that we have going on. Without it, I don't know what we're going to do.
Yeah, you know, next week, we put in an offer for a piece of property. We're already building the homes for that property. So, you know, the five-year plan is that we've modeled what we're trying to do, and, you know, I'll just, in case that was lost, like, we're trying to do unsubsidized housing. I believe that's really something that can be I believe that's really something that can be replicable. It's not relying on grants, it's not relying on HCD funds. It's able to be done by the community and for the community in a way that everybody wins, where there's a return back to the community. And so for me, in five years, we've modeled not only what a business can do that can be inspiring to other local businesses, working with RERC and Sierra Commons to model the way we operate so that when the next small business wants to open a new shop or launch a new product, they raise that capital within the community. So it gets back to the community. And then this cohousing community, you know, like Morgan, you know, said, like, what are the needs of people? Like, we are disconnected right now. Let's create communities of communities within communities. And so this cohousing community being a model that shows some of these beautiful silos of Nevada City and Nevada County that are separated. We have our in-concert Sierra Hall, our fine arts. We have our downtown music scene. We have our local, you know, visual and virile lists. We have all these incredible, wonderful communities, our local farmers here. And we can showcase those within this cohousing community. And then that be an inspiration for other communities to do with what they will with it that makes sense in their community. So for me, it's always been to model so that it can exponentially grow. You know, when I was an old teacher, I used to teach teachers. And having 30 kids in my classroom versus having 30 teachers that each had 30 kids in their classroom is a really big difference. And so for me, five years from now, we've really created a successful model to be inspiring for other communities around the country.
Five years from now, maybe I'll be retiring, I don't know. But that's it, I don't know. Five years from now, I mean, what I would like to see is that Habitat has enough buildable land to figure out what is the maximum number of homes we can get to per year, right? So larger projects with all ready-to-go, all build-ready so that we know that we can just keep on building and not have that ever be interrupted. And that, and that what is the maximum we could do? We've never hit that because we've always run into some kind of barrier or roadblock, delay in a project. So we want to find out what that maximum is that we can all do together. And that's how we're going to do it. Build-ready lots of, you know, sizes of 16. We currently have probably, after we make an offer on a piece of land, we'll probably have about 34 lots to go. But we need a lot more than that. And so that runway is just there to figure out what we can accomplish.
Before you cut us off, I'm going to, I'm going to jump in. I have some breaking news. We, just yesterday, we learned that the Tax Credit Allocation Committee is recommending our second phase of the Lone Oak Apartments in Penn Valley for funding. That's 31 units of housing for seniors, age-restricted, 62 and over. The official meeting of the state is November 19th, but that's typically just a rubber stamp. So unofficially, we're being recommended for funding. The county has already committed upwards of $1 million from some variety of funding sources. We have some state home committed to it. If we are officially awarded November 19th, we'll close our financing April, May, start construction immediately thereafter. And those 31 units for seniors should be online in spring, summer of 2027. So pretty excited about that.
So it sounds like we do not have time for questions, but we do have all their websites up on the, on the screen here. So copy down, and their contact information is on there. And I want to thank our panelists, not just for being here today, but for the good work they're doing in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy, for that excellent and inspiring panel. Hey, Dean. It's time for public comment now. Dean's our man with the microphone. As I said at the beginning of the meeting, public comment, we can't comment back to you. You're limited to three minutes. You have a captive audience? All right, I guess, raise your hands for Dean, and he'll make his way.
For the record, I'm Gordon Gossage with Regenesis Planet. And I know you guys got a lot of emails, but on Monday, if you're an elected leader or the senior executive officer of jurisdiction, then you got it. And I have a proposal for using deliberative democracy for housing solutions. And my question revolves around, and it's in your email, think of the components of cost for creating a home. There are a number of levers you can use to lower that cost. And what I sent you is basically the cost components for a $500,000 home, and then what they are to lower it to $300,000. So then the question for anyone out there, including the planners, if you think of a two-dimensional matrix where there are things that have a high impact in terms of percentage, but then on the other side, it's what can local governments do? What kind of power do you have? And, you know, for example, you can't change the price of steel or lumber. But there are things you can do in terms of regulation. So in thinking of the cost components that you can decrease, what do you think the top three or four are that would lower the cost of housing? Thank you.
Hi, who am I addressing? Am I on? Okay. Thank you for the meeting today. It was informative. I put together an affordable housing project, an overview of the housing needs to the county last year. And so I had a lot of data from that exercise. And apart, what I found is about 3,000 affordable housing units needed from the top tier of the low all the way up to the very low and the more desperate housing. And the problem that I've seen, and I've been in land development and civil engineering since 1972, so I've seen a lot of this development come online where it would take, you know, maybe a couple of years to get through a development project, and that would still drive the developers crazy. And now we're looking at 12 to 15 years. That's the average in the state. And the trouble with that is there's not much incentive for developers to develop low-income housing. You know, they've gone through a lot of heartache. They put a lot of money into these projects. And so they divert from low income, even if there's subsidies. They just go for the highest dollar they can get because they've put so much skin into the game. But in addition to that problem, more than 50% of projects approved in the states are challenged, you know, typically by NIMBY groups taking on, challenging the EIR for a project. So some of those projects, now that they're approved, they've been challenged, and that adds to more costs, more timeline to the thing. And there's not any oversight on the EIR process except at the legislative, legislated level. And, you know, something needs to be done at the legislative to rewrite or revamp this EIR process and as well as address this NIMBY thing. But it's just insane that it would take 12 to 15 years. And I've been involved in the project, it took 38 years, and it's still not done. So there are problems with getting land, getting infrastructure available to build any type of housing. And until we can address that, there's a lot of window dressing, you know, lots of great ideas, but we've still got to be able to develop the land itself. So I just ask you to consider some of those things because the timing is a killer for the developer. That holding cost, all that cost. And it's not, there's not much incentive to develop low-cost housing. Now, you could do infill a few little units at a time, but we need 3,000 units, and it may be more now. But anyway, there's a major problem, and it's not just in this county, it's throughout the state.
Testing?
Got to forgive me for a second. I've been recently hit with large-scale brain cancer. So this is something I'm dealing with. My name is Louis. I'm a mathematician.
All right, I'm an innovator. A theoretical physicist.
Yes.
For 10 years. Okay, currently?
I'm currently, I'm currently leading a team through the X Prize Quantum Applications Department in a three-year, $5 million competition. It's not easy stuff. I'm one of the leading theoretical physicists in this entire program. And I'm here to press or to file a complaint against Geo Dome. It's because Eli Hall is one of the worst things that ever happened to me. Checking in here back in July, he, they employ a guy who's a complete psychopath who targets people he doesn't like. And he didn't realize I was in the multiple mind program already. And now I owe these 33 stitches to them. I didn't have any of this problem beforehand at all. I was living a pretty robust life. And my, my project has specific application to the Geo Dome projects and how to apply, how to apply that type of technology into homes and top. I'm a certified smart home programmer as well. So I understand that technology very well. I filed a police report. I'm pushing for some type of follow-through with that. And any discussion on how to do that would be appreciated.
That's it.
Hi, I arrived late, but the last two panels that I saw, I just want to say thank you so much for all the innovative work that you are doing. And I welcome any innovation that does not involve calling a pop-out tent camper a permanent home. So thank you for the work that you are doing and your creative solutions.
Hi, I'm Tracy. I'm the president of Nevco West Community Land Trust. As some of you know, we build housing that's affordable to middle and lower-income people. I came today because, you know, there was a presentation about what is workforce, what is affordable, right? And to me, it's really simple, it's numbers. I mean, the state defines workforce housing as 60% to 120% of AMI. And I guess the question I have to the board and our leaders here is, is really about priorities. And that's a big range, you know? And I hear Trekkies going up to 180% AMI, right? So people at 120% AMI can afford market-rate homes. I'm not really, they can afford a $560,000 home. And so my, my thinking and part of the conversation is, given that funds are really tight and getting tighter and hard, and the resources, whereas Tyler can tell you they're pretty thin in terms of capacity of human resources that we have. And so, you know, really, what is the priority? What is the income demographic that we most want to serve? And obviously, there's the homeless segment and permanent supportive housing. And outside of that, if we're reaching down into, you know, the lower-income folks, which is 80%, down to about the 30% AMI, you know, what do we need to do to get there? I am happy to say the, the good news is, is that we've been building homes affordably so that they are affordable to people who are lower-income without subsidy. And we've been doing that through social impact investment. Another big help, and, you know, we've been looking at this together with the county, is obviously donated land. That takes the cost out. As Lorraine was talking about with Habitat, having those, you know, those parcels that are buildable. On a policy level, one of the big things I think we can do right now, especially for the cities, is to adopt SB 10, which allows upzoning of infill parcels. Because the greater the density, the more we can optimize it, the easier it is to reduce the cost per square foot. And because we have so few multifamily zone parcels left, it really is one of the biggest levers that we have right now to reach those lower-income housing numbers. And again, without subsidy and without necessarily having to rely on grants. The other piece of that is AB 131, which is the SEQUAB exemption, which makes it a lot easier to get projects through. So some of those NIMBY forces that were using SEQUAB stuff to block projects aren't possible anymore due to that state legislation. We have, just as a benchmark, I think the other thing that's important to look at is, is what solutions are actually affordable to lower-income people. We've been building homes in Penn Valley, some of you know, and even in the floodplain, which is a little expensive. Our hard cost, our construction cost is $186 a square foot. And, and that's paying everybody what they get paid ordinarily. So I think that one of the things we can do as a community, all the different housing folks, is to come around together to look at how we can get those hard construction costs down further to increase affordability. I sent you guys this, the table with the affordability things in your email, so you'll have it after. Thanks.
I don't want to throw a whole bunch more in there, I got to talk enough. But I did want to just throw into the conversation, you know, one of the things we talk about with housing is all of these different, like, issues that we're dealing with. And in terms of inventory, one of the biggest things that we're dealing with is not that there's not homes. We're seeing larger homes that are being occupied by one or two people. And we don't have that movement to have opportunities for them to move into smaller homes. And we're not seeing smaller homes being constructed because of the cost of construction being so high. And when you start to squeeze homes down and get rid of those big, large, open living rooms and bedrooms that are lower per square foot, it gets more expensive per square foot. And so, you know, it's not just an inventory thing, it's an inventory of those $200,000 to $500,000 homes. And so, you know, that's really what we're going for. And I'll just throw in another quick plug. Next Saturday, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, we'll be meeting at the Madeline Helig Library at noon if you want to learn more about what we're doing. That's it.
Thanks for the public comment. It brings us to our next steps, which is recognizing that Grass Valley is our host next time. Hey, Tim, what are you guys going to talk about? Oh, his mouth is full. We'll figure it out in six months. Fair enough. I want to thank everybody from the public and all the jurisdictions for joining us today. I heard some very inspiring things, like that single clap just now. Thank you for the public for contributing your comments there at the end as well. And all the panelists who said some fascinating things I'm going to follow up on. For the electeds and staff, we do have a mixer after this. Please join us up the hill and around the corner. And, yeah, I mean, do I have a motion to adjourn? I hear a motion and a second. We're adjourning.